This evening, again, we would like to call the Monday, March 19th, which is the school board meeting to order. That's...
Anyone who can translate Spanish for us, Spanish speakers, if you are a public school official interpreter. I just want to mention that we had a recent parent teacher purposes, 13 schools and over 60 interpreters. And we had a blast and everybody said it was a great time, so we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
If the woman is a president, please respond. Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Ms. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Here.
And we've been joined by our student representative, Maria Singleton.
Good morning.
The next item is 1.4.
Just letting me make a comment, Mrs. Singleton, I understand that you have to leave by 7:00, 7:10. And we will honor that. Thank you.
The next item is 1.04, the pledge of allegiance filed by the [inaudible].
Mrs. Singleton, can you leave the board here in public? Could I just go?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you see that?
The next item is 1.05, the national edition, and I do have several changes. As you will notice, they're putting another selection from the [inaudible] 2.02, but we will then... Students from code, deferred item 6.01, student code, responsible ethics. Move item 6.04, receiving update on secure solutions. Move item 7.02, receive for action and recognition regarding secure solutions. And move 7.05, receive for action and request to replace your boot at West Village out of memory school. Those three items will be received after the minutes are approved. The other changes are to add 6.05, receiving updated bullying policy. Add 7.07, receive for action, the business section of the policy manual. Add 7.08, receive for action, the new [inaudible]. And add 7.09, receive for action, superintendent's recommendation excluded for designated society absence. If there are no changes needed, we will continue to include the agenda as a meeting.
I motion to revise the agenda this evening. I would like to include a discussion item to review the proposed organizational charge of the cabinet and overall budget cost for the cabinet and the central office.
So it's been moved by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Sapien to amend the agenda, to add... So to make the changes as recommended by the clerk and to review the proposed or charter of the cabinet and the budget. Any discussion? So, um... Ms. Perk?
We have a chair for clarity reasons and purposes. When we get to the agenda item, the closed session for positions of persons, I don't know to what extent things are going to be discussed, but my question is, do we... What exactly are we going to address cabinet positions as they were proposed because the board has not been considering them yet? Or, I'm not clear, or what are they going to do?
So we have our attorney here, Ms. Lilly, who can give the board reference to policy 1-1.5.
This will offer information regarding, I guess, the discussion of personnel versus what's been recommended. I don't know if it's going to answer your question on point, but the policy, which mirrors the language that is allowable, permitted in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act with respect to the discussion of personnel matters. Your policy speaks to the fact that you, as a board, have decided that discussion of personnel matters is to remain confidential, must be discussed through appropriate channel. And it's the obligation of you all to protect the privacy of the individual and that information with respect to criticisms will occur in executive session. You also have another mention about matters discussed in executive session being held confidential. And so to the extent that a conversation delves into an individual or identifies with information regarding an individual that is, that's handled in, or should be, per your policy, needs to discuss in closed session. To the extent that we're talking about processes overall, which is what I shared with the chair as far as the current organizational structure, that's, because that's public information already, that's a public conversation. So it really depends on where we're going with that conversation, as I also shared with Ms. Gibson in the talk of the hall today, too. It just depends on where we're going with that conversation. I'm not clear as to where those conversations are going, so make any comments beyond what I just made.
Ms. Gibson?
And for clarity, my intent is that we have a public discussion about the overall structure of the board. That does not pertain to the board chart without names on it. I think should and could be reviewed until we include the public in the dialogue of what this revised structure is going to be. Additionally, I've, you know, we're in the middle of budget season and we're asking for a lot of dollars. And so I read in the paper that the savings, you know, we're talking about the savings, but I think it's important that we really review just the overall cost of the cabinet, the overall cost of our central office staff, so that we're able to make a decision based on that understanding.
Ms. Crosby?
No, I just, um... And I just want to make sure, so in terms of what we're talking about for our policy, just talking about the organizational structure and it's okay to include the new organizational structure or the proposed organizational structure.
My comment has been the current organizational structure is public. To the extent that those conversations about the new proposed structure go into identifying people or conversations that could identify people, that conversation is in that closed session. And so I don't know where the conversation is going to go to.
If I could add, it would be difficult for me to discuss the proposed structure without talking about current individuals and future individuals certainly can talk in abstract terms, but we're going to be talking about moving things and parts of the organization that necessarily impacts the individuals who are currently leading the work and who are proposed to lead the work going forward. So I'm certainly glad to share the organization chart. But a discussion of how it came to be, I don't know how to do that without talking about the individuals involved.
So let me caution board members. When we're talking about the proposed structure, the board has not had an opportunity to deliberate, to discuss the proposed appointees. And in accordance to policy, how can we have a discussion about something we have not had an opportunity to discuss, a personnel matter? So I would caution board members, we have not... This board, we have not had an opportunity to discuss personnel matters, salaries, positions. We just haven't had that opportunity. And I... We want not to compromise the policy that we have in place because we are, we do set policies. So I would just caution board members. Ms. Thor?
If I'm hearing correctly, the only thing that we could discuss in the open would be the current board chart?
And I think that [inaudible] just mentioned that he's comfortable with sharing the chart. Is that what, the new chart? But even discussions beyond that, as to any questions responding to why they seem to be on that new chart, we need to take those to close. So it's really going to be one of those things that you guys got, you have to, I guess, parse through because every question could be, we need to discuss that in close. And on the flip side, when we're in close and if we need to delve into process conversations or things like that, then those are conversations that we'll be had when we get back inside.
So the motions made, or the last by Ms. Gibson, if you can share again what you added to the list, because I didn't get it all.
Sure, to review the current, or the current, and I don't know that the current is the right word because I think it's important to review the overall cabinet structure that we have. I know there was a lot of pushback during the previous administration's tenure. I know that there's also, you know, the cabinet structure that we have now, that we had during the interim structure. So I think it's going to be to look at those and to compare, really, this is about comparing the costs. So what are the overall costs of the cabinet that is being proposed? As well as the overall cost with the central office salaries as well. So that way we can tell constituents, then when we move into close and looking at the specifics of individual salaries, we understand how those salaries fit into this broader picture.
So board members, offer... So Ms. Gibson, let me ask you this. Would you be willing to separate your motion from the agenda items that we are making those adjustments to? Moving...
So I could, I may actually move to accept...
You get a first item.
I could move to accept the proposed agenda items and also add the addition of the items then, is that what that's?
No, I'm asking, would you be in favor of separating your motion with amended items from the clerk? Making that a separate motion. Court?
So we need a motion to amend the agenda as presented by [inaudible].
Yeah, by [inaudible].
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Thor.
Second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved by Ms. Thor and seconded by Ms. Gibson to receive the amended items for the agenda proposed by the clerk. All in favor? In their polls, I consider we have none. The motion has been approved as amended. Go ahead.
So Ms. Gibson, what I ask for you is to discuss the overall cabinet structure and the overall cost of the cabinet being closed and the overall cost of the central administration. So we need a second, please.
I was not prepared to discuss the entire central office this evening. I was not informed that we were going to discuss 200 employees, so I won't be able to be responsive to that.
You know, as always, if there are different questions, we can talk about that.
We need a second to discuss this. I'm sorry, I'm saying, need a second.
Ms. Barlow?
Thank you, manager. I do, we had a discussion, I should have had a discussion on the... Very sensitive to the rights of those both qualified employees by us to have their, you know, protection next to their identity and force to those types of considerations, because we've got these policies in place. So I think if we move into discussion, we do really have to lock the fine line. But to the extent that we can talk about it on a broad scale and have a general idea of what the difference in conversation to [inaudible], I think that would be helpful. But I really think as a board, we're very careful about these issues related to the specific individuals.
So with that being said, seems like there should be some parameters? Any additional discussion, Ms. Thor?
Now I gave this aside. Correct me if I'm wrong, because most of us are new to this, but in the past, a couple of superintendents, as far as I'm concerned, the structure of the cabinet was determined by the superintendent and not by the school board, is that correct? Okay, so I'm not sure that we need to get into the weeds on the structure of the cabinet. That would be my... Thank you. Ms. Thor? I don't want to limit conversation, so if there are board members that want to talk about this, I'll support it. It does feel very micromanaging and I'm hesitant from that, I agree with Ms. Ellen in that perspective.
Ms. Thor?
If I may just, additional piece of information?
Before I give my, Ms. Thor, but with respect to the experience, I agree with Ms. Thor and Ms. Thor. It's the board's responsibility to hold the superintendent accountable. It's the board's responsibility to provide oversight. It's the board's responsibility to hold the superintendent accountable and evaluate the superintendent on the performance and the outcome of the school district. And this is my first time serving on board and, you know, the superintendent created their organizational structure. So I again get into the weeds. This person will require you to do the job, it is our responsibility to hold superintendent parents accountable for the outcomes of the school district. Our focus should be on student achievement and making sure that each and every child receives that quality education.
Thank you, Commander. I, I agree with everything you said, but I also want to highlight that the board can't be responsible with the decision. And so I can understand where, you know, Ms. Gibson sometimes concerns about our constituents. I know, that being said, I am a little concerned that talking about this, that we cannot do it if there's no preparation for this and it cannot be a meaningful discussion in public when there are going to be [inaudible]. I'm a little concerned about just the outcome, the outcome of the conversation. And if we're talking about broadly, I'm completely in favor of that, but getting into the, I think it's going to be hard without getting into the specific personnel issues that accompany that type of conversation. I just, if we are, I would like to have a conversation just about the budget piece, but if we're not prepared to talk about that, it just, it would not be a, it would be a wasteful exercise.
So can I clarify about that? I'm certainly prepared to talk about the budget as it's related to the cabinet.
I'm certainly prepared to talk about the budget as it's related to the cabinet. I am not prepared to talk about the budget as relates to the entire central office. My only point is, it is difficult for me to talk about the budget without talking about, in fact, I don't know how to talk about the budget for the cabinet without talking about the salaries that current cabinet members make, and how I'm changing those roles and what new salaries will be. That's, that's the math, so I don't, I don't know how to not talk about that. I can give you the aggregate numbers, but I don't think that's going to be satisfactory to people, so the only other way to take it further is to do which, I, I just don't know how to do that without sharing that information, so.
Salaries, excuse me, qualification purposes, salaries, once they are voted on, become public. Yes, they're over a certain threshold. The, uh, the, do you read the regulation act, um, personnel provision, and you'll see it on, probably on your agenda, um, excuse me, um, provides the exemption upon which you can go into closed session, meaning to discuss the personnel matters. And you can go into closed session to consider the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school boards. And so arguably, these are salaries of, proposed salaries of appointments. And so to the extent that they have not yet been finalized and are subject to discussion and debate, potentially, that's a closed session, that's permissible for a closed session discussion. Once they are approved and an HR action, then of course, as been, has been the practice, we give oil, but we give money.
And also, I just want to add, um, Ms. Cosby. I had no, um, that was just oversight on my part? Yes, our responsibility is the physical piece as well, so just wanted to clarify that. So I guess, yes, at this time, we can call a question, and Madam, Madam Cliff, we have to do a roll call vote.
And to clarify, this, the conversation I requested is, is about the aggregate, um, aggregate cost, so that we can, you know, so we have that understanding overall, what, what the question is.
Uh, given the motion, Ms. Gibson, a second, if that, I'd like to subpoena to discuss the overall cabinet structure and the overall cost of the cabinet being proposed and the overall cost of the central administration and stores.
Yes.
Mr. Obergefell?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burgh?
Yes.
Ms. Obergefell?
No.
Madam subpoena?
Yes.
And Ms. Page?
Yes.
So we need to set the parameters, um, for this discussion, because again, we have. So, because we have other items on the agenda, when we get to that part in the agenda, we can set the parameters. Everyone is available to that.
The next item is 1.06, through the directive made in February 2018 meeting, and the minutes of the March 2018 school board meeting. Uh, those minutes were distributed for the review, the correction to the minutes of the February meeting. Uh, with the vote taken on HR actions, it stated that Mr. Young and Ms. Gibson voted no, and they actually abstained on the vote, so that correction has been made, so now change as it should put the minutes at this time.
So, um, minutes will be approved as received.
The next item is 1.07, receive an update on secure solutions.
Welcome, Mr. Trans. See, see, who's in favor?
A little bit. Well, I appreciate y'all moving this up, and I apologize for the way I'm dressed, however, being right-handed dominant has been a difficult challenge, learning how to live with just the left hand. Secure Solutions, as we talked about, uh, a couple meetings ago, they're proposing, and I think it's eight to 10 of our schools, um, to put in a solar pop power system that'll handle about 25% to 30% of the power at that individual school. Their program is not tied to what a lot of solar companies are, is trying to sell you energy, and therefore you're saving money. You will save some money here, but we still will be buying power from Dominion off of our normal electrical, because their system doesn't give us 100% power, just going to do about a 25% percent. Their program is really tied to education, and we gave out, I was told, we had handed out, um, on Albemarle County. Um, they're in it, they've just completed their first year, um, as far as production and things like that. It exceeded their expectations monetarily, it saved them about $3,500. And if you recall, in their proposal, it saves some small dollars at the beginning, but over time it grows and becomes bigger and bigger. And the reason it does that is if people are educated about energy, there's a lot of things that save energy. You would be amazed at how much it costs just to turn the lights on on a football stadium. And once you turn the lights on, there's a minimum charge. Whether those lights are on for five minutes, or those lights are on for three hours, there's a minimum charge there. You have the same thing in your kitchen, in our kitchen, as far as how we use our natural gas and electricity. So there's many ways that you can go about saving. Once you're into that mode and you understand how your electrical costs are generated, the things you can do, you'll start saving a penny at a time, and all of a sudden that penny's going to become a significant dollar. And that's their real program, and why, as it gets further out, it does achieve some significant savings over time. And I would recommend the approval for the superintendent and the school board chair to move forward with this program with secure solutions.
Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, and if it's appropriate time, I would so be.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Young and seconded by Ms. Obergefell to approve the recommendation of secure solutions.
I just want to say I've been a strong supporter of this program. I think, um, it's a great example of a win-win-win, um, a way that we can, um, teach our students about, uh, the green jobs of the future, and now, a way that we can save our districts some money and a way that we can help the environment. So, um, I am very pleased, um, that this is on the table, and, um, I'm very excited about potentially moving forward. So thank you for looking into this and for bringing this to us.
Yes?
Mr. Obergefell?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Obergefell?
Yes.
Ms. Obergefell?
Yes.
Madam subpoena?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes, 9-0. Next item is 1.09, receive for action a request to replace the roof of West Oak Hills Elementary School.
If you recall, when we were doing the facilities, um, preparation, when we got into the phase one discussion, there was a schedule we provided that had a number of projects that we were going to do during, using 2018 CIP, and one of those is the roof of West Oak. Um, we've gone out for bid, received our bids, it's $592,000. Um, we want to keep the budget still allocated at this point in time, because we do anticipate that we may see some damage to the roof deck below as we take the roof off. Um, we, we have an estimate, we believe that we're going to incur, which is well below the, the shortfall, the difference of $205,000. But just to be on the safe side, because you don't know what we will find until you really tear off that roof, um, we're asking your permission for the, um, school board chairman and the superintendent to move forward with the awarding of the bid for $592,000, and us to proceed with beginning to work on the replacement of the roof. And that roof will cover about 85% of West Oak. The gym is, is a newer roof, so we won't be touching that. Um, that's still got about another 10-plus years of life left, but this will replace the remaining part of the roof, which is well above 30 years of life.
Last seven minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Obergefell and seconded by Ms. Young to receive for action replacement of the roof at West Oak Hills. Any discussion? Hard questions?
Ms. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Obergefell?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burgh?
Yes.
Ms. Obergefell?
Yes.
Madam subpoena?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Thank y'all very much.
Next item, I want you to move back to chairs, I have two public information, I have five speakers who signed up in advance for each of them.
You see the speakers that you signed, and I just would like to thank, I just want to say thank the audience who's been patient with us as we made the agenda to accommodate Mr. Trans, who is still under Dr.'s care. So I just want everyone to be aware of that, and thanking you for your cooperation and your patience. And if you're speaking as an individual? Yes, the clerk will call the names, so before you speak, state your name and sign in. If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes, speaking in the only hand of an organization, you have five minutes.
My name is Michelle Sevier, President of Virginia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and I just, I'm sorry, I'm not sure whether I'm in right time to speak, but I do want to bring everyone's attention to the, um, what's going on in the Richmond Public Schools. You know, they, you have a very large makeup of Latino students, over 12%. And, um, you know, Richmond right now has the highest dropout rate of any community. I just wanted to share that, you know, when you're, when you're looking at funding a program, how important that no kids get left behind. And it's so easy to happen when you don't understand the language fully or cultural barriers. I want you to know that you have a partner with the Virginia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. We work extensively with our program Passport to Education. Um, we are partners with you. We have a program to go out to help, uh, the teachers, um, deal with language barrier and cultural barriers, and so you're not in this alone, and I think as a community, that we can get, work to, closer together, we can address these programs. And I just wanted to share that, uh, with you. Lisa, who's, um, my wife is, she works extensively bringing programs to several of Richmond Public Schools, and, and, um, and I just want you to know that, and it's just a tragedy. I know when I came here from Mexico, uh, over 50 years ago, if, I was one of those students. And it's so easy to get left behind, so I just encourage you to, uh, to keep that in consideration for this year's budget, thank you.
So before you do sign in?
Sure.
Thank you. As I call the speakers who have signed up in advance, please remember to sign in and state your name while we're on the run.
Madam Chair, person, Superintendent Cravis, members of the school board. I wouldn't want to bring this up, but since the previous speaker did mention it, I do want you to understand that at Oak Grove Valley, we have been running an ESL Spanish academy for the last five years. We have 40 children every Saturday, along with 40 volunteers, so it's one on one, from nine o'clock until 12 o'clock, helping them. And we're seeing dramatic results through that, that's just a side note. But what I'm here to talk to you about is, Ms. Page and I attended a PTA meeting at Oak Grove last week, and the majority of the questions that she fielded was about transportation. Why are the buses late? And in October, we talked about the shortage of school bus drivers, hasn't been rectified. And it was hard to say, no, it hasn't been, maybe we've made some improvements, but the shortage is still there. I really looked in the future with the elimination of the hub system, and the hub system at Oak Grove was working fine, because I know those kids, I know their family, and they were working a third of the mile, wouldn't create the hardship. So don't throw out the whole system, but look at the ones that need to be thrown out. Mr. Trans Floyd Miles Vernon Hill, they've made a huge impact in transportation, almost an impossible situation. I want to talk to you about Oak Grove, though. Uh, many, many of you have gone on a windshield tour with me to Oak Grove to see how small the community is, and how it makes no sense to be spending money on transportation when we desperately need a science teacher. This brochure goes back six years, and this shows you the depth of the community engagement. And it was all supposed to be a walkable, bikeable community. The city invested $600,000 in sidewalks. VDOT supplied $350,000 for a bridge to go across the road, which then made it possible, this is hillside court. Once you get to this point, you can actually see the entryway into the community. The dots on here are school bus stops. 80% of our children live within a third of a mile of that school. We've got school bus stops that are two blocks away, doesn't make sense. So either, uh, look and reevaluate your walking policy, either enforce it, change it, or adopt the Oak Grove Valley, uh, model, and then finish transportation to all children except for the ones that choose the one. We've contributed 800 bikes in there in the community, we're opening up a bike repair shop. We've got a community event going May the, uh, 19th, to go bike to the T-Pipe Bridge. We've got kids, middle school kids, you've met them, Bobby Taft, Nave Wolf, that are on it, group, that are building a case for putting that South Link. So before you just, you know, continue this 60,000 dollar investment, it's not 60, but it's 300,000 that you've spent so far, and it's 60 every year, remember that, it's not 60 one year, but I thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
And, uh, here are copies of two. But what I didn't say or hadn't said on these issues.
Jeremiah Clark? Jeremiah Clark?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremiah Clark. I am a current student of Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts. This is my second year at this school. I love all the teachers, staff, my friends, and going to the Friday morning meetings. I came here in to ask all the school board members to please, please vote yes on the charter school renewal. This school means so much to me. Thank you for hiring me, share with you all, God bless everyone.
Thank you. Ariana Lucky.
My name is Ariana Lucky. I am in the second grade. I love my school. I like our art. I like these stores. I please, please keep my school open. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine Lucky.
I'm in kindergarten. I like about Patrick Henry. The science and art. They keep my school open. Thank you.
Thank you. Annalisa Hill.
Hello, I'm Tiffany Ford. I'm reading on behalf of Ms. Hill. She had to leave earlier. Alright, so, good evening, RPS Board members. I am Annalisa Hill. And I'm here to speak to you tonight to request you all vote yes to Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts charter renewal. My daughters are in fourth and fifth grade at Patrick Henry, and my husband and I love to celebrate this school. We've never second guessed our decision to enroll our daughters at Patrick Henry. Patrick Henry is an RPS academic asset that has improved year after year and will only continue to get better. We are an intentional and involved body of diverse students, teachers, staff, and administration, parents, and families, and the other schools, and the communities that surround the school. Richmond residents from all over the city and amazing Patrick Henry alumni, some that went to this school seventy-five years ago, including me. Patrick Henry is an amazing place where children are nurtured and thrive. By sheer fortune of location, we are able to do out of the box things that enrich the children in real, tangible, and meaningful ways. We back right up to Forest Hill Park in Reedy Creek and can walk into the James River Park system with the amenities. This is one of the many things that make PHSSA a unique and wonderful school. I'm not going to stand up here and suggest that every elementary school in Richmond needs to look exactly like Patrick Henry. That would be as silly as telling you that everyone should look like me, or I should look like you. Just like each of us, every school in this city is unique and has its own unique personality. And each one has a spirit and soul to be amazing and successful. But I'm going to stand, but I am going to stand here and tell you that Patrick Henry should continue to be an option for Richmond's families for a very, very long time. I want to thank you all for your hard work, for the hard work you are doing to build the framework that each of these unique schools can grow within. Please vote yes to renewing our charter school and seeing what the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years that Patrick Henry brings. I know that charters are not necessarily popular with everyone, and I have read the horror stories of charter failures in other states. But that's not here in Virginia, Virginia. Our charter laws are written in a way to prevent those situations. Patrick Henry is a success, a Richmond Public Schools success. We are RPS. Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the list of speakers who signed up in advance.
Do we have any other members in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Do you have more?
My name is Tom Harpoon. I'm speaking as an individual. Let me speak to strategic planning. No doubt, the new team has their own well-developed plans. But what I see is the failures of last time may be relevant. But first, a more urgent matter. Please straighten out the mess with school staff attendance hours. We need a standardized schedule. Asking principals to set the staff attendance day, school by school, was a bad idea from the start. School staff are employees of the school board, not the principals. Basic work conditions should be standardized and set from central office. Note well that principals do not, for example, have the power to set salaries. They should not have the power to set overall clock-in, clock-out schedules. The implicit idea of principal determine hours seems to me that, to be that teachers do not work except when they are confined to the building. This is disrespectful and counter to the truth. Are there lazy teachers? I don't know. But if there are, confining them to the building only gives them more time to socialize and do social media. If you do not teach, if you do not treat your teachers with dignity, there is no way they will give you maximum professional results. Squeezing the best to try to make the worst better is an ineffective strategy. Back to strategic planning. I'm no expert, but I know an upside-down process when I experience it. The process last time was a funnel with the choke point at the business end. A large group of community members was gathered to begin visioning. Then they were dismissed. Thank you, you're done. Then large action teams developed specific items of a period of a couple months. Over those couple months, the group I was part of dwindled from about thirty-five members to about four. Then we were dismissed. Thank you, you're done. Finally, large swaths of the action plans were dumped on the desks of existing individual downtown employees for implementation, each of whom already had other full-time responsibilities. The work of many devolved to the responsibility of one, with what I would think of as the natural follow-through team left behind. Mrs. Oakley, maybe among others, would know all details. I doubt this upside-down funnel was the intent of the expensive consulting firm, but I do not know. Sometimes compromises are made that gut a good process, just mentioning this sentence, like saving money on a good car design by leaving out the starter and the emergency brake.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Camaras, Ms. Page, Dr. Sipini, and members of the school board. My name is Aram Mon Moore, and I'm the president of the Richmond Education Association. And I'm also a citizen of the seventh district. On March the fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the National Walkout displayed a activity on social media and in the community, and of course, on the national level. We are very proud that one of our blue ribbon schools, Richmond Community, made media headlines for school participation. With such a high-profile event, our concern was for the safety of all students. While all the students in caring that they had the opportunity to exercise their voice in a safe place that allowed them to organize and stand up for equality and serendarity for classmates and for all of the lives that was lost. From an instructional perspective, it was a real teachable moment for our country and in our community. It is REA's hope that dialogue between teachers and the students are conducted in ways that are sensitive, age-appropriate, robust, and ongoing, as we do not necessarily have all of the answers on this issue of safety. The National Education Association surveyed members from across the country who were very passionate about the issues of improving school safety after the Sandy Hook Elementary tragedy. This report was presented to then-and-then Secretary of Education Ernie Duncan in two thousand and thirteen. A copy of this report will be shared with you first thing in the morning for me. The Richmond Education Association appreciates having and will include parents and the community members to participate for the RPS task that we would like to speak with you further about. I would like to share with you that the Virginia Education Association is also creating a statewide task force for improving school safety. They have a set deadline to the school board of edu, to the State Board of Education on or before August thirty-first for this year. In conclusion, the members of the Richmond Education Association are committed to providing a safe school experience for all of our students regardless of zip code. With that said, students who want to engage in relevant, meaningful lessons that impact them. We do include, we do encourage the district to begin and continue to provide resources that can help with these lessons and dialogues. I feel sure that these sorts of teachable activities and moments can and will occur with openness and without punity. Superintendent Cannon, REA is looking forward to meeting with you on Thursday, and we look forward to speaking with you about student achievement, professional development, climbing with administrators, the MOU, teacher recruitment, and retention. See you Thursday.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Edward Bowman. I'm going to read off my phone because I'll pull this up. Currently, I'm a PE teacher at John B. Carey Elementary School. This is my tenth year at Richmond Public Schools, eighth year at John B. Carey. I'm here to discuss workplace bullying. I have never felt so harassed and bullied at my job. I've been in contact with REA. I have emailed some of you all. I've been on three performance plans in the last year and a half, and which, to my knowledge, the HR department has not received one. The follow-through has not received one. It has not been completed. It's also in the wrong format. A month ago, I was talking to my principal that he was recommending me for a non-renewal of my contract. A week ago, I received an email from Dr. Leonard that he was approving a non-renewal without any discussion with me, without any follow-through, or with any reason. Two others I know in my building are going through the same treatment. In the last year, we've had eleven teachers leave John B. Carey. Anybody who ever lived in Richmond knows, teachers just don't leave John B. Carey. Because of the treatment of my principal, Michael Powell, I am really thinking, considering going to another district or even changing my employer. We've lost our librarian already this year. We have two teachers retiring. Another teacher I know is thinking about transferring to another district. So as a former student and employee of RPS, I want to know what's been known about workplace bullying and harassment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah McLillard, and I am the chair of Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts Board Directors. Listening to each of the parents and community members speak on the fifth and tonight, and reading what they have written you all over the past two months fills my heart with pride and joy. It is so hard to put into words all of the amazing parts of Patrick Henry, but I feel that they have been able to do just that. We are scholastically and financially solid. We are giving back to the community, not only by creating a nurturing and diverse place for children all over Richmond to grow, but also in smaller ways like singing in retirement homes, providing seeds and plants at Friends of Forest Hill Park, cleaning up litter at Reedy Creek. We are creating caring, well-rounded, socially aware individuals. I want to share one example of what this looks like in the classroom. It is just one of the many projects that got me hooked on this school. A first-grade class collected trash from Reedy Creek. Then they sorted and weighed the trash. They used the trash to make an art piece that represented one of the animals the litter harmed, and then wrote a letter to community members asking them not to litter and explaining how it affected the habitat of the animal in their picture. Math, science, writing, art, environmental studies, and advocacy. All taught to a first grader who just thinks it's cool that he gets to go on a hike at school and play with trash. This is what making a difference looks like. It's arms wrapped around friends of different backgrounds from different parts of the city. It's planting a seed for the first time and eating what grows. It's kindness projects sent across the world and across the classrooms. It's raising money and donating clothes to a classmate whose house burned down. It's the smile on a struggling student's face when they get caught doing something positive. It's the confidence to look an adult in the eye and invite them into the classroom. This is Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts, and we are RPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Lucas, please be respectful of all of our speakers.
Good evening, my name is Anzley Perkins. Normally, I come up with a written statement, which I hope I don't regret tonight. I don't know how many of you attended the RPS Fine Arts Festival on Saturday, but I was blown away by the students' works that were on display. Some incredible, incredibly talented students, just doing some amazing stuff. And some teachers that are channeling creativity and channeling emotions and channeling not having a lot of supplies and doing some really great stuff with these students and making connections with everyday life and with the school curriculum. I just was, and continue to be, in awe. And as many meetings as I attend here at the school board, I don't hear nearly enough about the great things that the arts are doing. And I would also remind you all, as someone who got her undergrad in music education, as we focus on trauma-informed services and what that represents, the arts represent an outlet for a lot of people and should be supported better than it is. And that's certainly not unique to Richmond. The arts have always been chronically under-supported and underfunded. But anyways, I just wanted to share how fabulous that festival was. And if you all did not get a chance to attend it this year, I certainly hope you do so next year. Thanks.
Thank you.
I am really shocked that I'm here when, you know, everyone's singing the praises of Patrick Henry. And I'm here to represent, once again, my name is Candace Lucas, parent advocate with Advocates for Equity in Schools. I'm handing you out a packet in which the young woman that's over the chair for Patrick Henry conspired with the principal there to put out an African-American male student with disabilities. They completed a falsified behavior, behavior plan, whatever you want to call it. The child has disabilities and they pushed him out. In fact, they expelled him on January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, and forced him on a homebound, and then lied about why they did it. That's why we're in due process next week. That's why I subpoenaed you, Ms. Page, because I need you to explain. That's why I subpoenaed you, Ms. Page, because I need you to explain to me how a charter school can push children with disabilities out and not follow their IEPs. So while they're talking about picking flowers and going on walking hikings and all of that, I want to know why they're not following federal law. I was told by Mr. Devon, the Assistant Principal, who admitted, and you guys know this, he admitted to shredding our students' disciplinary record so that no one would have evidence that they took illegal action against him. This is the man you have over your charter school. And he smiled when he said it. Got it on audio. I paid for Channel 12, they want to hear Channel 8, anybody? But you guys did not do anything to him. He is still employed with this district, and I know that this child is not the first child whose records he shredded. Now, when I sit here and I hear everything that's good about Patrick Henry, I want to talk about everything that needs to be fixed. There is, under no conditions should anyone, whether they're a board member or administrator, be able to push a child out and exploit the parent. Talk about workplace bullying, I want to talk about schoolplace bullying when it comes to parents. Our parent was told her child was put out. She begged for help from Richmond City Public Schools for almost four years to help her with her child who has severe autism. And Patrick Henry, including that woman that just spoke up here, wrote a letter to her on January 22nd and told her her son was put out of the school and that they would not provide support for him. She did that. The one that was talking about skipping through the tulip, her, she did it. So when you talk about Patrick Henry being inclusive of all children, evidently black boys with special needs don't apply. It's unacceptable. Now, I'm not for, I'm not for not approving the charter. I'm just about cleaning up the house. And it is unacceptable, once again, that this is a manifestation that was really wrong in Richmond City Public Schools when it comes to special education. We have administrators like Mr. Devon, the Assistant Principal, admitted to shredding students' records, destroying evidence, and he's still there. Superintendent Cameron, I just saw him back here, you know, with his little orange tie on, clapping as the little kids are speaking. He's still there. How many other children's records has he destroyed, sir? Under Virginia Code 20-22-690, Section 8, he should have had his license revoked by you. A petition should have been filed immediately. I'm an educator, he is disgrace to my profession, sir. He is disgrace to my profession. I'm a licensed administrator as well. Now, if we're going to protect black children and dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline, we have to start at the grassroots level, start with the people who are the conductors of the pipeline, which is that woman right here. I don't know her name, but she's over the chair of the committee, who intimidated and threatened and just bullied our parent because she felt as though this child who has severe disabilities did not belong or was not entitled to be a Patrick Henry. How racist and bigotry can you be? How bigotry can you be? I am enraged, and you guys know I can get pretty hot every now and then, but I am enraged that Patrick Henry put this African-American male child out and made no effort to support him. That is not what charter schools are for. Charter schools are supposed to be the exception. Charter schools are supposed to be innovative. Charter schools are supposed to be inclusive. They are not supposed to be promoting Jim Crow tactics. They're not supposed to be doing that. So I am going to call them out. I am going to call them out because the illusion that they wanted to give this board and the public is not true. There are those of us that are voiceless, that are being pushed out, and that are being pushed out with the collaboration of the school division, the administration, and the board of Patrick Henry. So we expect some action immediately, or we will be advocating for them to close down.
Thank you. Please give some, we, we all given that opportunity for our speakers to come speak.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Crawford, Elite Education Consultant, and I am a national member of Dignity in Schools Against the School-to-Prison Pipeline. I'm coming before you because as an extension to what Ms. Lucas said, those individuals need to go. It's a race school, but we can't have that discernment going on in our public schools. But I came to you today to advise you, effectively on March 16th, the Office of Civil Rights has opened up an investigation against Richmond Public Schools when it comes to Dr. Anthony Walker. I will not be discriminated against because I protect the rights of students. I will not be retaliated against, and no one will impede my professional business practices. In the email that I received, I was advised that I could not be on the independently evaluated list because I'm an advocate for students. My professionalism was questioned, indicating that I would be, I would not be impartial. I produced a total of almost 110-page comprehensive, cultural-sensitive, trauma-informed, functional behavior assessment, something that no one in this state does for a child that I was ordered to do when I spoke as an expert in a due process hearing. And to indicate anything else and to impede my business practices to provide a free, appropriate public education to our children, I'm not going to stay for that. I got the letter in my mailbox today. It's been opened immediately. So you all are under investigation for discrimination and retaliation, and someone wrote this email for him that he sent to me because I can't understand why a man with a doctorate would send me an email and have it copied to himself. But we've already learned the tactics when someone else writes your email, you replace your name, but he forgot to remove the CC to himself. So I got an email with a lot of details in it. This is ridiculous. One thing about me, I have a lot of ethics and morals with me as an educator. I'm a product of this school system. I don't know, don't look at me like that, Ms. Thomas, because you know what? We don't want to do that here, okay? We don't want to get into the looking game because you know when you say some things that, that you all are going to be sued for about me. So I want you to understand it, and it was put in writing. I am not going to be degraded as a professional. I'm not going to be imposed upon providing support and services to our children. I've extended myself numerous of times to Richmond Public Schools for professional development. I've even given Mr. Walker, Dr. Walker, and them free advice and counsel to help them get around some of their non-compliance issues of IDA. But I've called Mildred Deloche several times. This is the first time since working with Richmond Public Schools, my calls went unreturned for a month. Things were put in place for me to give support to the principals prior to you coming aboard so that we can minimize the suspension rates, to teach them how to properly govern their schools when it comes to children with disabilities, and how to develop a curriculum framework to deal with those issues. Now, I know it's retaliation because you know what? I'm the less controversial person you're going to meet on the advocacy team. But I know the laws. And the question was, will I testify on behalf of a school district? If you ask me, yes, I would, but you better be right in what you're doing. Because I will testify for you, but I'm not going to testify without ethics. But I am not going to be a part of the discriminatory and retaliative practices. I'm not. So I did request that my name be placed on the IEE list, and I did request that every functional behavior assessment I've been asked to do, that I be compensated because my business practice has been impeded. Now, you think about what 110-page document costs that took 116 hours from an expert, someone with a PhD in special ed leadership. I will not be harmed at the auspice of Dr. Anthony Walker and any other person that is consulting him. I will be treated equally. I will not be treated as less than a person.
Thank you.
So, in a unique position that I get to interact with these kids, a lot on social media and other things. So tonight, two things, just coming to address you for them. And they come to me and they say, Coach, can you please, can you please just go tell them? So yes, I'm telling you, we have, we have issues, we all know we have issues, but I'm here to work on these issues. Our young men and women need something to do. You coaching football and basketball is not a seasonal job. It's something you do year-round. So, we all know what incidents we had at Union Avenue, so I'm getting phone calls and I'm like, fine, go buy it, buy it. Because, Coach, we have nothing to do. So, for my kids out there, I'm telling you, there's things that we can do that doesn't cost a lot, that can give these kids something to do. It's the people that want to put the time in. That's all it is. I promise you, that's all it is. So to that point, my second one, I don't know how more clear I can say this to you, but I want to do that. Next head coach at Union Avenue, football head coach for a reason, to show the city how we can be done. This is not a joke, this is not a game. So, and you telling me that you can take the salary, but we want to take, whatever that little salary is, we want to take that football team to camp, out of state, so they can experience a college, they can see something different for the kids that may never get to see. I believe every city high school should be doing it. So the only way we can do it is to show someone. So I, I wish I could be Mr. France and just say, can you get a vote real quick? I wish it was that easy, but I don't want to. So tonight, I'm just, I'm telling you, yes, I want to be for that one reason, to show and be the first example of what we truly can be in the city of Richmond.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Shelley Batista. I was here a few weeks ago asking about locks at our school. And I want to say thank you very much for getting that done and why I'm happy today at Union Avenue. I'm here to talk to you today about data and how the data lies, and I've told you this before. The students that are taking the alternative assessment, the work he's reading, the work he's writing, they are assessments, but they are not testing the kids at a level that you would consider. And you would see what these tests are like if you haven't seen them. They are not high school level. I would say that they're probably eighth and ninth grade. We get students in from the Peter schools in ninth grade that do not know how to write. There is no writing program in this district. You're not aware of this. I teach AP at Armstrong, and I will tell you that I have students in my AP classes that were placed there, that were recommended and have not passed AP, excuse me, SOL reading, writing, or the alternatives. We have to stop doing that. The students have an incredible insight up here, but no one's taught them how to get it down, down their arm onto the page. So my suggestion at this point, before I get to my data, is that you please consider suspending the AP program until you have a writing program that prepares these kids adequately. I know, this means I don't have a job. I'm not here for the job, I'm here for the kids. These kids need that writing program. I presented something to the English department, they pushed it up to Teresa Cole. I hope you consider something because it needs to be done. The other part of the data that we're looking at is the Power School, which, looky, looky, they've just partnered with Microsoft. They're going to push out Office 365 and all that good stuff into there. I'm sure you're excited about that. The problem is, Power School is a classroom management system and has won awards for their classroom management system. It is not, per Pearson, when they sold it in 2015, it's right here, they wanted to focus on programs that actually measured student progress. They said Power School doesn't do that, but yet that is what we are using. Teachers have not been given full access to add their own questions, add their own readings. So we are at a disadvantage in all the, I don't use it because I'm AP, it only goes up to 11th grade, but the teachers are using something called backwards design, finding what test questions are on there and then designing the curriculum for the next two weeks. They design a test that lasts usually 45 to 60 minutes, and they are administering this every fifth class, a bi-weekly assessment. And the kids are wanting to know, when are they going to learn? Now, the assessments that we use are not authentic because we have to base our assessments in Power School on what other teachers around the country have put in. There is no access for us as teachers. Brooklyn County provided access for all of their teachers so that they can provide authentic assessments. So again, Power School is not what it appears to be. Unless you provide better access, the teachers are not going to be able to provide authentic assessments, and under ESA, that's what we're really looking for. And I wish you'd consider a writing program, and please consider possibly suspending the AP program for a couple of years to get our kids ready. Because it's, our money is better spent preparing them rather than pushing them into a class if they're not prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Wade. I'm a teacher at Armstrong High School. First of all, I want to confirm everything that Ms. Batista said. Power Schools is incredibly ineffective for what they want us to do with it. There is no way to analyze student trends other than going test by test, student by student. It does not aggregate the data in any meaningful way, but that's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about rats. We have a lot of them, and it's getting worse. We know it was going to be a bad year when on a tour for the eighth graders coming to Armstrong, the art teacher found a whole nest of baby rats and had to lie and claim they were baby squirrels. In the past few weeks, there have been two rats in the English department. I have caught two rats in my classroom alone. In fact, my rabbit caught one of them. And there have been two rats, and you think rats only come out when it's dark? No, in the past two weeks, there has also been two rats that ran across the gymnasium in the middle of intake when the entire student body was there. So as you can imagine, we're getting pretty frustrated. Unless you think that this is something that can be dealt with over the summer, I will let you know that the rats, over the summer, take to having, not having cafeteria meals provided to them, take to feasting on blue sticks and colored pencils and crayons that have been purchased predominantly by teachers. So that was a lovely surprise when we found out that all the blue we thought we stashed away is now gone. So, I understand that facilities is on the issue and buildings are in disrepair, but, and Armstrong is not a top priority in the, in those discussions, but I would like to ask that you guys work, see if you can put together a pest management plan for Armstrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Connor Wilson. I'm a social studies teacher at Thomas Jefferson High School, and I appreciate the opportunity to be before the board this evening. I'm bringing what seems now like a rather less weighty issue, but something that was important to my students. There's been a policy change this year where students are not allowed to consume water or snacks of any kind during SOL testing. Students are often in those rooms for, you know, three hours, four hours while they're taking those tests, and they do multiple tests per year. In previous years, we've been able to offer them water and snacks for them to have while they're taking those tests. That's both a way that we show caring for them and a way that they feel cared for on the day when they go in to do something that is pretty stressful because it's part of their graduation requirements in a lot of cases. So, it's a pretty simple policy change that's been made, but it has a sort of disproportionate impact on students who are most vulnerable for test anxiety. So I would, it also seems like a relatively simple thing to fix, just going back to the previous policy of allowing students to have water and snacks during testing. It was unclear to teachers when we were informed of this information during a staff meeting whether this was at the district level or whether this was new guidance from the Virginia Department of Education. In fact, the general tone of that meeting was that our guides, counselors were told not to ask those questions when discussing them. And so, I just wanted to put it before the board and in public that that was a change that was made, and that I believe that it should be changed back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam, I'm sorry, Ms. Vice-Chair, I'm the Superintendent, other School Board members, and especially my School Board representative, Mrs. Burke. I am pleased to stand before you today and say thank you in advance for voting yes to the renewal of the Patrick Henry Charter, because I know that's what you're going to do, because you know that is the best choice to make. There's really nothing else that I can say to encourage you to vote in favor of the renewal. There's really nothing else that I can say to encourage you to vote in favor of the renewal, because it has already been said so eloquently before me. I served as the Chair of the Board of Directors for Patrick Henry School at the very beginning, and there were many days and many times that we did not think we would be successful. But I am extremely proud to stand before you this evening and say that for those of us who worked so hard, our work was not in vain. All you have to do is listen to our children, look at our Facebook page, look at how our children are engaged in education. Look how dedicated our teachers are. Everything that you want them to do, they work hard to do. And even for the challenges that you heard this evening, Patrick Henry is not afraid of those challenges, because when I served on the board, there were many of them. But we looked at those challenges as opportunities for growth. And so the persons that I know that still work, teach, the administrators, the parents, continue to look at those challenges as growth and will work very hard for you to be proud of Patrick Henry. So again, I want to say thank you in advance, because as I look at each of you, I know you're going to vote what is right. And that is to say yes to the renewal of the charter for Patrick Henry School. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I'll be speaking on behalf of the group. Good evening Superintendent Camaras and School Board members. My name is, I'm sorry, oh, Support Our Schools, I'm sorry. My name is Chris Lombardi, and I have been a teacher with R P S for fifteen years. I represent the advocacy group Support Our Schools. I am here today to express concern about the hiring process for the cabinets of Superintendent Camaras. It has come to our attention there will be a reorganization of the administration structure, including the combining of positions and the creation of new titles. This is reasonable, this is a reasonable action, and even expected when new leadership takes the helm. However, according to R P S policy seven dash four point three, the superintendent is required to prepare an organizational chart and give it to both the School Board and R P S staff when making changes. While I heard mention of this earlier in the meeting, to my knowledge, this has not been done yet. We deserve the chance to see what the structure is going to look like, and the board should have a discussion on the merits of the reorganization that is proposed before implementing it. Additionally, if new positions are created, the board needs to officially vet them, along with job descriptions and an assignment on the pay scale. At the moment, the board is considering a vote on hires for positions that don't actually exist and have no formal accountability structure. It is also important to know when the start date for these people will be. A document obtained through a FOIA request indicates Ms. Hadasco, and forgive me if I mispronounce her name, started work February twenty-sixth. It's my understanding that when Candace Hunter was believed from her position, Mieko Timmons assumed the role, though with a different title. If Ms. Timmons is still on the payroll, as the organizational chart currently online indicates, does that mean two people are currently being paid for the same responsibilities? If so, this is a waste of taxpayer money that we desperately need elsewhere. How does it look to citizens when they read one story about Armstrong not even having stall doors in their bathrooms, while a new administrator is making a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, which is almost seventy thousand dollars more than the previous person in the same position? We've been told the Chief of Staff is going to have more responsibilities under the new organization, but without an available job description posted for a minimum of ten calendar days, which by the way is a policy the School Board chose to waive to compare to the last, how can the people know whether the increase in salary is justified? We are told that due to positions being combined in the cabinet, we will save money. However, that is only if we are looking at cabinet positions. We are hearing that new positions will be added to the administrative staff. We cannot evaluate if we are saving or losing money until we know how many staff members will be hired overall and what they will be paid. During the previous administration, the Bellwether Report of 2016 listed the cost for central office administration at two percent of R P S's total budget, spending a hundred and fifty dollars less than peer groups. This translated into more money spent on instruction. We are asking tonight that the board take three actions. One, delay, delay this vote until you and the public have had time to evaluate the new administrative structure and give yourselves time to fully vet new positions. Two, cap administrative staff costs at three percent of the budget. This should include any other type of monies being provided to staff, not just salaries. For example, if we will be providing money for new hires to relocate, that should be factored into the three percent cap. Three, require that all these positions be advertised and other applicants considered. We have a full staff until June, so plenty of time exists. Although we recognize that a new leader often wants to bring in people they trust to be part of their new administration, it is reasonable that these individuals participate in normal hiring, in a normal hiring process. Finally, a few words about transparency in government. Some would interpret transparency as information will be provided if you seek it out and ask for it. This type of transparency rarely leads to widespread public knowledge of the workings of government. Real transparency means a concerted, a concerted effort to make the public aware of what is occurring, and even better yet, to solicit public input. We are fortunate that many in our city care enough to be involved in these decisions, and the point of having a school board is to better connect the public to government decisions. We ask that the School Board and Superintendent keep this in mind as we restructure R P S to be more successful for our children's sake. We are excited to support you, Superintendent Camaras, our new leader, as we move forward, but in doing so, we cannot throw reason and proper procedure out of the window. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Deborah Corliss. Chair, Page, Vice Chair, Dr. Spini, and Superintendent Camaras. I don't usually come before you and speak without preparation, but I was so taken back by some comments that were made tonight, I feel like I need to give you some additional background. The year that Patrick Henry opened, we had a kindergartner biracial from the seventh district who came from what we call a traumatized background and was also severely autistic. A child who would melt down in our school three and four times a day. He had a one-on-one. We would wrap him up, carry him out. Seemingly bright child, got all kinds of positive reinforcement and got to use his laptop. He graduated from fifth grade. A beautiful, beautiful child, very, very prepared to move on to middle school, and I believe he's at Hill, I can't swear to that. But this, as I say, was a child who also had exceptional needs, and I think we did an amazing job with him, and is one of my favorite reasons for being associated with Patrick Henry. I think I've already reviewed with you our financial stewardship. Eight clean audits for all the years that we've been open, while only receiving seventy-two to seventy-five percent of the P P F. We, even with our reduced resources, are able to do renovations, our maintenance and repair. We have a debt service, which is capped at ten percent per the former board. We've been fully accredited for the past two years, and we've grown since that first year in the church basement to have a hundred and forty-nine students to three hundred and thirty students today. As you heard from many others, we have engaged children, engaged families, exceptional teachers who enjoy working in one of the great places in R P S. We have outstanding leadership in our principal, Dr. Atkinson, and our vice principal, Mr. Devon. We have taken children to the opera. They attended the ballet. They were, a large number of our fourth and fifth graders actually got to attend a visit by then-President Obama over at the University of Richmond. We've had lunch date with the future, which is more of a managed program, and the children graduated at Willow Oaks Country Club, which was a big day for a lot of those children. We have Friday morning meetings where we talk about values and very important principles, anti-bullying, ballroom dancing, and a composer-in-residency program that we've had for seven years. And I even understand now, you can feel your neurons jumping when you're at Patrick Henry. So I just want to say that the last song, one of the children, or first songs that the children wrote, the Patrick Henry Song, which says, Patrick Henry said, "Give me liberty or give me death." But I say, "Give me the arts, give me science, give me music, give me dance, give me an education, so I can have half a chance." Please vote yes, or children can continue with all we say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Carmen and School Board. I wanted to start by saying, I'm here from Franklin Military, but I'm not here to advocate for Franklin. Last week, we had a discussion in class, in our government class, about pipelines, specific pipelines from school to prison. So when you have a person from, let's say, Armstrong, Juvenant, George with John Marshall, they walk into school, they, they got to go through a metal detector. They got to be lined up. They have to be treated as if they're criminals before they even step in the building. That's not right. I believe the focus of anyone claiming for a school board, or anyone who's pro-school, we need to focus on school. One of the speakers, Mrs. Lucas, I believe, she said, one thing that she said was, voiceless. We are not voiceless, no. We are here today, we are all gathered here today, we're all expressing our opinions, and I wanted to say thank you to everyone who got up here today and expressed their opinions. But to be voiceless is not one of those things. We wouldn't be here today if we wouldn't, if we didn't all feel a strong need for a problem. Or we wouldn't be here today if we didn't all understand that there was a problem. We live in a democracy, so if we, none of you sitting here today would be here if there weren't people who felt you were perfect for the job, or you would be able to get the job done, if I make sense, or if you can understand what I'm trying to say. But myself, as a student, as a student that goes to R P S, that's been in R P S, written and development houses and things of that sort, I just wanted to say that why not get a lot of feedback from students? You have people coming up here saying discrimination, they've been discriminated against. That's, that's on an adult level. At a school, the school is basically for development, promotion of education, and structure. So the development is not of an adult, it's of the student. So I believe that the focus should be there. I do believe that there are parameters that are in place that restrict the relation between an adult and a student. So much to say that if I came home, or if I came from home to school and I'm having a bad day, thank you, there would, maybe, maybe there, maybe there's something that I can't say, "Oh, Mr. Carmen, I feel such and such and such and such and such," because such and such and such and such and such is happening at home. Maybe I can't do that, because there are parameters in place that don't allow me to speak freely as such. But as a student, to have that relation with a teacher or an adult in the building who, who they feel is their job, their responsibility, the reason they signed up to be a student or an administrator in the first place was to promote the development of the student. It shouldn't be, oh, this kid sits in class all day and they don't do anything. To you, that's your perception, that's your perception. But when they go home, how, who are you to say that they aren't going through something? You know what I'm saying? So for you to take only what you see in the school and not at home, or the piece that we can't control, the piece that we don't see, the piece that we don't know is what goes on at home, what goes on at the community level, what goes on when they're not being seen at school. You don't know that. So for you to, for teachers or administrators to not have that understanding or that relation with the student, I believe there should be some parameters in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Satan. I think that concludes our current information period. Mr. Satan.
The next item on the agenda, item three, recognition, and we have two recognitions. See, Madam Chair. And our first recognition goes to Leon Gray Singleton, who is our student representative for John Marshall.
Certificate of recognition to Leon Gray Singleton from Franklin Military Academy. We have Principal Hudson here as well. Do you mind standing up just so we can recognize you? For serving as the student representative to the School Board of the City of Richmond for the month of March two thousand and eighteen, signed by Nancy Page, School Board Chair, and Jason Camaras, Superintendent, dated March nineteenth, two thousand and eight. Congratulations. We are so grateful for your insights and for what you just shared there, and for coming out of the last month. It's been so wonderful to see you in this role, having seen Franklin Military and seeing the leadership that you've destroyed there. I'm so excited to see what you've accomplished. Congratulations. Let me show our appreciation.
Mr. Satan, good evening, Mike, again. Do you have any words that you would like to share with us? Because I know you have to leave, but please, please share with us some more of your words of wisdom.
At Franklin, it's a military structure, so one of the things that they teach you is respect. One of the, one of the gentlemen who spoke today spoke on discrimination. So before we can understand each other, we need to first of all, respect each other. Like I said, we all have our First Amendment, we all have our freedom of speech. So for you to say, "Oh, I didn't like what you said, I didn't like what you said," that's not okay. At the end of the day, they're still entitled to their opinion, they're still entitled to their own voices. Just because it's not what you like, doesn't mean it's not important.
Our next recognition is to the R E B Award winner, Mr. Jay Austin Brown.
Please join me in congratulating Principal Brown. Richmond Public Schools presents this award to Jay Austin Brown, Principal of Richmond Community High School, for the two thousand and eighteen R E B Award for Distinguished Educational Leadership, signed by Nancy Page, Board Chair, and Jason Camaras, Superintendent, dated March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And we show our appreciation.
Staff members.
Students.
Public students. Alumni here on behalf of Richmond Community High School.
Let me just add that one of my first experiences as superintendent was to be able to sit in on the selection process for the R E B awards, which is actually when we met, I think. And Richmond Community is such a special place, and I think one of the best examples of that is how the students led. We could walk out just a week or so ago, and it speaks to the leadership that we are growing there at Richmond Community, and so I'll take out the students. All the families of Richmond Community, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Congress, Mark Hickman, the Commonwealth Strategy Group. I will try to be brief. March 10th was the last day of the regular session of this year's General Assembly. But as you all have probably read, legislators did finish without completing a final budget. As we've reported in previous updates, there's an impasse right now over the expansion of Medicaid. The House passed a version that includes it, and the Senate passed a version that does not. I should say that in addition to the philosophical difference between whether or not to expand Medicaid, each House version, each chamber's version of the budget is also very different in terms of their spending priorities within their own budget, as you compare the two. And so the Budget Conference that was appointed to complete the compromise, should they be able to reach one, really does have its work cut out for them. I'll mention who the Budget Conferences are very quickly. House Appropriations Committee Chairman Chris Jones. These are from the House of Delegates. Chris Jones, Chris Peace, Barry Knight, Scott Garrett, Luke Torren, and Mark Sickles. I mention these folks because with the loss of two previous House Conferences after last year's elections, John O'Bannon and Tag Gresen, the elevation of Delegate Cox to the speakership, and Delegate Steve Landis voting against Medicaid and the overall House budget, he was not included in the conference. The six House Conferences, there are six Conferences that are new to the process, and those are Delegates Peace, Knight, Garrett, and Sickles. And then on the Senate side, no surprises, it's the same Conferences as last year. Those are Majority Leader and Finance Committee Co-Chair Tommy Normant, Finance Committee Co-Chair Emmett Hanger, Minority Leader Dick Sasslaw, Janet Howell, Steve Newman, Frank Ruff, and Frank Wagner. Senator Hanger has expressed support for a version of Medicaid expansion in the past, but differences do remain between his position and the version passed by the House of Delegates. So there is really no consensus at this point. We did communicate RPS's positions on education-related budget amendments, working with the administration and with the Legislative Committee and the school board. So the conference visited their offices and communicated our positions. They are aware of the items that we support and the items that we oppose in the budgets. So both Houses adjourned without passing a resolution, setting the terms for a special session, which means that the governor called them back into session on April 11th, as you know, to vote on the budget. And the Conference Committee is expected to work between now and the special session to issue a budget compromise for the General Assembly to approve and to send to the governor. And I'll return to the budget a little bit later when I wrap up. I wanted to quickly highlight the status of certain bills that we've been following. The high school apprenticeship tax credit sponsored by Bourne and Sturtevant. Neither bill actually made it out of the Appropriations Committee, but the Senate did include both funds and language in their version of the budget for Senator Sturtevant's program established in his bill. And so there's a chance that that will be included. School discipline. The bills, as I mentioned in the past, by Delegate Bourne and Senator Stanley, compromises were passed by both Houses, and we do expect the governor to sign them. Regarding teacher licensure, again, a big topic here in Richmond and Virginia. We talked about SB 349 and HB 1125 sponsored by Senator Mark Peake and Delegate Steve Landis respectively. Both of those have passed and again, are expected to be signed. I had the opportunity this morning to attend a committee called the Advisory Board on Teacher Education and Licensure. It's an advisory board established by statute to advise the Board of Education and the Department of Education on teacher licensure. And this is one of the main bills that they talked about, and I'll just very quickly review what it does. It extends the, they extend the length of a renewable teaching license from a five-year to a 10-year term. They eliminate the requirements for teachers seeking initial licensure or renewable license to demonstrate proficiency in the use of educational technology for instruction, to receive professional development in instructional methods tailored to promote student academic progress and effective preparation for the SOLs. They allow an individual seeking a provisional teacher license to satisfy certain licensure requirements. They provide full licensure reciprocity for teachers with a valid out-of-state license, with full credentials and without deficiencies. They establish alternate routes for elementary and special education endorsements. And also, this is a new policy, they provide for four-year education prep programs. So essentially, it's an education major in our four-year colleges. They do permit one- to two-year provisional license extensions if the division superintendent requests them. They extend the one-year waiver of teacher licensure requirements to two years for trade and industrial teachers, CTE teachers, that have 4,000 hours of relevant employment experience. And lastly, they eliminate the restriction on three-year CTE licenses that limit such licenses to teaching only half of the instructional day. The bill also requires the Department of Education to report on the effects of these changes to the General Assembly by July 1st of 2019. And lastly, if there are no questions about the legislation, I'll get back to the special session and the veto session and what we expect to happen. We of course follow the Budget Conference as they try to work out a compromise. One likely possibility is if the Conference Committee is not able to work out a compromise to send to the full General Assembly for approval, that their budget bill is essentially dead, which would allow the governor to introduce his own budget. We expect that if that happens, that it will look very much like Governor McCollough's outgoing budget in terms of including straightforward Medicaid expansion. If the General Assembly passes a budget that does not expand Medicaid, so the Senate side prevails, they pass a budget, but it does not include Medicaid, the governor then has the opportunity to offer amendments to that budget, and we actually do expect that he would have the votes to sustain those amendments and have Medicaid passed. After April 11th, we then look forward to April 19th, which is called the veto session. That's when the governor's actions on bills, on non-budget bills, where he can either sign, veto, or amend them, those actions are taken up by the General Assembly for a vote. We will be working with the Legislative Committee, Mr. Barlow, and Dr. Sapien, and the administration on what we can do between now and April 11th to advocate for our budget items that we support. And so we look forward to that process. And I should say, we also look forward to laying the groundwork for building relationships with the governor's office and the legislators for next session, so that budget amendments and a full budget in a couple of years are more favorable to RPS and public education.
Thank you for the update. Can you go back to Senator, I'm sorry, Bourne and Stanley's school discipline? So what was the compromise? You just said there was a compromise, so what was the compromise?
Yes, oh, right, yeah. I had kind of skimmed through this because we had talked about them, but to go back, because that is a great question. The compromise essentially is that in the past, bills like this that essentially restricted the school board's authority to impose long-term suspensions have died because the major public education groups, the DEA, the School Board Association, the superintendents opposed them on the grounds that local discipline issues really should be the board's purview. The compromise here is that even though both of the bills, what one pertains to long-term suspensions in general, the other one pertains to specifically grades K through three, is that they restricted, for example, on Delegate Bourne's bill to 45 school days, but it allows a long-term suspension to extend beyond that if the division superintendent or the school board finds that there are aggravating circumstances defined by the DOE, or if the suspension is preceded by another long-term suspension. So essentially, it gives you the school board flexibility and superintendent flexibility if there are aggravating circumstances, or if the student engages in some serious crime with the HIC or other behaviors. And so the other school groups did support the legislation after working with the pages.
Can you, it was helpful last time when you put together a little one-page action alert with specific targeted senators and members of the House that we can mobilize our constituents to call and get involved as our release of April 11th Conference? And specifically, can you just remind us the dollars that are at stake here for RPS? If the House version of the bill is not included as a part of the final bill?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, and I should, but to say they're in the tens to hundreds of millions if you count the entire state, specifically for RPS, I don't recall Mr. Myers's estimates, but they're also in the tens of millions.
Thank you, Mr. Hickman. It would be great if you could just send a follow-up report with some of the remarks that you put forth today. We're digesting a lot of information, so if it's decent, we'd have that in writing. And you can include those, that would be awesome. And then I know we discussed previously, but I'd love to see an update for all the legislation that we've seen this on, and where it is in the process, or how it died, did it die? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Happy to provide both of those in written form to you as soon as possible this week.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Madam.
Good evening, school board members. Madam Chair, Ms. Page, Vice Chair Dr. Sapien, Superintendent Camus, and other school board members. My name is Cara Arson, I'm the Early Head Start Head Start Program Manager. And tonight, I'm here to provide the annual School Board Training, Program Governance Training. Currently, our program's budget is a little bit over $8.1 million, and we provide services to 922 preschoolers in the Richmond, Petersburg, Goochlin, and Powhatan area. We also provide 56 slots to infants and toddlers in the city of Richmond. Tonight's overview will provide you with, you start. Tonight's overview will provide you, as board members, with information regarding your roles and responsibilities as it relates to the program's Early Head Start Head Start Program. In your handouts, and if you don't have any, I have some up here that I can pass out to you guys. In your handout, you see that you have three main duties. One being the duty of care, which is to act carefully and deliberately when handling the program's business. This includes regular attendance to meetings. Ms. Owens is currently our school board representative for the Policy Council, and she attends meetings monthly. Become knowledgeable about the organization's business and see to it that the actions and the decisions of the board are properly approved and documented. Your second duty is duty of loyalty. And that means to always act in the best interest of the program, to provide support and advance the mission of our program, which is to provide early childhood education services to our adverse children and families. And the last duty is the duty of obedience, to ensure that our program is following the guidelines, to ensure our program is following the guidelines in accordance with the federal performance standards and Head Start Act. You will often hear the term by the federal government as the program's governing body. And that is because grantees are represented in many different agencies. Some have community action agencies, some are schools, some are cap agencies. For the Richmond Public Schools Early Head Start Head Start Program, the school board is our governing body. And to ensure we are in compliance, the federal government requires that the composition of the school board must reflect a member of the board who has a background in fiscal management or accounting, early childhood education and development, someone who's a licensed attorney, and a member who reflects the community and includes parents of former or current enrolled Head Start children. Other members may be selected for their expertise in education, business, administration, or community affairs. Another requirement of the federal government is that as a grantee, we must establish and maintain a formal structure in shared governance through which our parents can participate in policymaking or in other decisions about our program. And the way our program does that is we have three separate shared governance. One is the parent committee, which is every parent enrolled in our program is a part of. So that's 922 preschoolers and their families. Then we have our policy council, which Ms. Owens is also a member of. At our policy council, it is made up of members from the parent committee, community representatives, and the school board representative. At our policy council meetings, they're held monthly, and that's where the program is able to share a month of reports, which includes what's happening at our central level, our health screening, our education data, our budget, fiscal information. Parents are also able to have, to discuss what's going on at the central level at their parent committees, and be able to voice any concerns or voice any questions. Ms. Owens also shares what's happening at the school level. And each person is responsible for taking it back to their individual committees, so that everyone is aware of what's happening at our central program and school board level. So the biggest is our legal responsibility. The federal government wants to make sure of you as the governing body, ensure that we are in compliance with the federal, state, and laws, which includes we follow, again, the Head Start Performance Standards, Head Start Act, and the Virginia Department of Social Services Licensed Daycare Regulations. We are always required to follow whichever policy or procedure is restricted. Your fifth responsibility is to ensure the program has appropriate internal controls, to ensure that the program has established internal controls to implement and safeguard against federal funds. And one way we do that is we make sure we're always sharing our budget at every policy council meeting. The program also has an accountant who works closely with finance. Any purchase over a certain dollar amount requires my signature as well as my direct supervisor before it's processed to finance. Our program does not have any checks or credit cards, so all payments are issued directly through finance. It also requires that we participate in an independent financial audit, which we always participate in Richmond's yearly audit. And any deficiencies from there, we provide a corrective action plan in this book before the board as well. Ms. Owens also is able to sit on, and she has been sitting on, our budget committee. So she's helped the accountant review, give us advice, give her all the input as to where we can make some savings or increase some costs to make sure that our children and families are given everything that they need. And in the next two slides, I just listed some of the reports you might see from us. If I list the report names frequently, who's supposed to receive those reports and the actions that need to be taken? Also, an email is always sent directly to the chairperson from the Office of Head Start if there's any communication from the Department of Health and Human Services. If we have any program violations, it will be given in a corrective action. So Ms. Page receives that as our chairperson. And if you would like to have a sample copy of any of these, you can come in on our schedule and get them to you. And lastly, how to be sure we're effective and we're ready and compliant? We have our program's annual self-assessment, which we're counting to allow the staff, we go on our health and safety part and we're on family services session. The policy council will also participate in that and give a report. The federal government also monitors us. They give us a schedule, normally they give us a 45-day heads-up, but they can come unannounced. Any corrective actions will be sent, and we will Any corrective actions will be sent, and we will have to implement some procedures to make sure we're in compliance, and again, Ms. Page also receives that to share, as well as Ms. Owens. We also look at our frequent paths, our chairs, goal scores, so that we can individualize training for parents and families, as well as determine what needs our children, what areas our children need in order to be successful in school. So those are just some of the many ways we can ensure we're being effective and remaining in compliance. That concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to say thank you. It was a great team working with her on that staff, and they do really good work. Thank you.
So Ms. Owen, be me too, and I just want to say thank you, and I had such a wonderful time with you at Blackwell.
Yes.
I remember I went to Blackwell.
Yes, thank you.
But it was truly wonderful to see the work that was going on there, and I appreciate all that you and the rest of the team does, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Owens, for representing the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion to affirm that the board has received Head Start training. As a member, it's been moved by Ms. Owens, her second side, Ms. Cosby, to affirm Head Start training received on the 3th of May. Any discussion? How to question, Ms. Owen?
Yeah.
Ms. Brawlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Oh.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
Ms. Love?
Yeah.
Ms. Sapiens?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
The next item is not possible to, sending an overview of the fund balance.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent. My name is Angela Anderson, and I am in the Budget Department. I've been asked to provide an overview of the fund balance for you tonight, and I'm going to provide you with some documents that you've seen before. There are three documents, and as they're circulating, I'll just give you some background. Again, they're all documents that I think you have received before. The first document will be a page from our audited financial statements as of June 30, 2017. And on this exhibit, you'll see at the bottom, under the general fund column, you'll see a summary of our fund balance. And our fund balance at June 30, 2017 is $24,428,754. The second sheet is a sheet that I believe Mr. Myers and the team has provided in the past for you, and that is a more detailed breakdown of the components of that $24 million. I'd like to first focus on, we can just start at the top, and I'd like to focus on the second category, which says committed. And so those committed funds, as you see, are funds that have already been appropriated and that we are currently spending now in fiscal 18. The school bus lease, which we make monthly payments on an amortization schedule, according to an amortization schedule, excuse me, and some capital improvement projects that were approved again in the prior cycle, and that we are already in fiscal 18, and we are underway and completing. The third section there is the assigned fund balance, and I think that's the area where we probably wanted to focus a little bit. And I'll just go through this really quickly, and I know you've all heard this presentation before, but we have $4.8 million in encumbrances, and again, those are legal contracts that were issued during fiscal 2017, and that at the end of fiscal 2017, they still had balances on them. And so they roll into fiscal 18, and we are spending those down as we complete the work or receive the goods against those contracts. Then we have a section that's called Special Education Programs, and those are revenues that are generated from, I'm sorry, specific educational programs. Thank you, Ms. Love. We used to call it special, now we call it specific. Those revenues are generated from sources that are not from the appropriation, so they would be like building rental fees, where we run out the art, the air center. They would also be, like for the Virtual Virginia Program that we operate, we have an administrative fee that's built into that contract, and so that fee comes to us, and we call it a specific source. It doesn't come from an appropriation. Then we have our retirement plan, and this amount here is $3.3 billion. That was based on an actuarial study for the early retirement plan that has now, it's closed, there are no new entrants, and it will sunset in a couple of years. So we have an actuary actually give us an amount on that liability, and that represents the full amount if we were to put it aside for all of the payments that are due for the remaining years for that program. Then we have $2 million in school identified needs, and those were identified in last year's budget cycle that at June 30, 2017, we assigned to complete those type of projects this budget cycle. We have some CIP interviews saying, what is debt not funded? Those are projects that we actually have completed. So we've completed a project, written a check for it, it's done. We've submitted the paperwork to get reimbursement from our CIP appropriation, but those projects did not qualify for 20- or 30-year debt funding. So they were deemed by the city's side of the house as either a maintenance or repair project, and not a project that increased the value or a major renovation. So while they were funded in our CIP, we paid for the bill. When we went to receive the money from our appropriation, our CIP appropriation, they were not deemed as capital improvement projects. So those are costs that we had to pick up, essentially. And then the 1.5 that was allocated, again, at June 30, 2017, for this budget cycle. What I like to, what I like to say about the area of the assigned fund balance is that those items that you see highlighted in yellow, those are items where the city does have a legal authority to appropriate to us. And so at the end of an audit cycle, under an accounting term, we assign our fund balance. So we decide, or the authority is invested in our CFO to decide through approval of the superintendent, what are we going to commit to doing with surplus funds? And so the assignment is the way we do that. And again, this is, this was back at June 30, 2017, and these assignments were made, and how they would determine, that was determined through the CFO. I'm just here to explain to you what they are. The point, I guess the point I want to clarify is that those funds either the city are legally appropriated to us, or should be legally appropriated to us. So we have assigned them, and they are not ours to spend until we have an appropriation.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson, for this explanation. Some of it made very, very clear. So my takeaway is that, no, we don't have $12.5 million in unassigned funds to now do what it is we want to do, $12.5 million is not to be, is already to be invested. Most of the, how much do we have? Okay, so our unassigned, our unassigned balance would be just the 1.5 million we have right here?
Right, but the, yes, and the unassigned balance combined with those items in yellow above in the assigned category, all of those funds are subject to a legal appropriation. We make an assignment, again, through the CFO, we make an assignment for the middle section. So we determine at year-end, when we have the audit completed, and I like to also say that we had the audit completed for 17, early, or on time, early November. So at early November, we knew what our fund balance was, and at that time, a decision was made to categorize this group of funds for these purposes. So the city can legally appropriate specifically, or they can say, this is your money, and we can spend according to how we've assigned it.
Thank you as well. On the, could you just, of the yellow highlighted items, are they highlighted? Could you just explain why they are highlighted in yellow? Does that mean that they are not technically obligated toward future expenditures, i.e. specifically with the special education, specific education programs in the local retirement plan? Could we, I mean, are those expenses that we actually will incur in the future, and so it would be fiscally irresponsible for us to reallocate those funds to other items? I'm just kind of curious why they're highlighted in yellow. It seems like we actually can't really do, I mean, it would be irresponsible for us to do anything with those monies.
They're highlighted, they're, thank you, they're highlighted, free question. They're highlighted in yellow to identify them as part of monies that, again, are subject to appropriation. And at June 30, these were the assignments of those dollars. And I attached also the change in policy for fund balance in the assignments, and again, you've seen this before, but I just want to iterate to you that the assignments are amounts that are constrained by the school board for a specific intent. So at June 30, this was the intent of use of these funds. I don't know if I answered your question, but they were highlighted to identify, these are monies that we had an intent for at June 30, 2017. And the assignment just references intent.
I guess my point is, with the school identified needs, that was an intent to spend that money, but if we were to re-appropriate it, say, to 1.5 million for safety, like we had voted on last time, it wouldn't necessarily, it's not like we've specifically obligated that money in the future. But with the local retirement plan, I assume that we actually may have to incur those costs in the future.
Those would be recurring costs if we did not fully fund according to our intent at June 30, 2017, yes ma'am. So we would have to budget those costs back into our budget.
Ms. Burke, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I think Mrs. Dooley has already answered my question, and I'm asking because I have a thought in mind about something we talked about earlier in one of our budget public meetings, and that was in terms of, I don't know whether this is the appropriate time, but we talked at one time about if we had any programs that are listed as a line item, it may not fall under this, I don't know, that's why I'm asking, that there may be some extra monies there. We're trying to look at, we talked earlier about a 2% raise. I don't know whether this would be, when you say the local retirement plan, now I'm understanding that would have to be, we couldn't reallocate those funds for, let's say, the 2% raise we talked about at one time, for everyone that's working, from bus drivers to cafeteria workers, teachers, administrators. Is, does that appropriate, that fit within that, or is that legal or not legal?
Thank you, Ms. Burke, for your question, and so I don't, I don't think that I was not, I have not been a part of the budget development process, or the discussions on how we actually will, you know, ultimately use any fund balance in the budget, the forthcoming budget. So I don't think that I can appropriately answer that. What I can say is that we can't spend this money without an appropriation, and that this is the intent, this was the intent for these dollars at this point in time, when we completed the audit.
But we can't?
But they have to be appropriated to us in order to spend them. This is how we wanted to spend them.
But now we may not be spending them, ma'am.
We haven't spent them at all yet. And so we're, so, well, we can't spend them, and so whatever the next course is, I don't think that, I have been a part of that discussion.
Yeah, I think I know we were, towards your question, so he would probably jump back. So, Ms. Gibson, and then, Ms. Brawlow?
Thank you, Dan, for this overview, and I think that this is an important discussion to have, primarily because there's been misinformation or confusion, I think, on the public side about the proposed budget and the funding that we've received, unfortunately because of some confusion in the press and the way that it's been described, so I think that this is an important conversation to be had. I think it's really important for people to know that we got zero funding to fund our operational needs, and so, and that's of critical import because much of those things are things that we don't have a choice about, and right now, we don't have any way of funding those things. Second, I think it's important for the public to understand that we did not get the entire fund balance back, and so the fund balance that was appropriated by the city of $12.5 million is about $700,000 short of what is in our, is in our balance. And then thirdly, I think it's important for folks to understand that of that $12.5 million, that it's not like we can spend it, we can spend it on, that much of this has already been allocated to needs identified in our budget. And so, so it's of critical import that this message is portrayed, and as we move into the process of working with city council to finalize the budget, I think we want to ensure that the community and our council members understand where we're at. Thank you.
Ms. Brawlow?
I think one other thing that if we were to enact best practices across this, with other school boards across the state that have a fund balance policy, my understanding, based on the research that Mr. Myers and your team did, most school boards have some sort of fund balance policy where they hold a certain amount in reserve for contingencies, a rainy day fund, if you will. We've proposed a 1% reserve, which would be about $3 million, so that would further deplete the amount of money that we would have available in our existing fund balance if we were to comply with best practices across the state.
And so, to your point, Ms. Thor, so the fund balance policy is for, this is the second, for the fund balance policy, as pertaining to what you're doing this day. So Ms. Anderson, question. So you are saying that, with highlighting? So you are saying that this highlighted yellow has already been committed or assigned? So do we need to, so I guess the next step, processing, process wise, do we need to send a letter to, to the city to request the allocation, use of funds?
Typically, the, the practice has been, the city has, we have requested our unassigned fund balance to be reappropriated in the next budget, and the city has allowed us to honor what we assigned without any request for appropriation.
Okay, so we don't.
But that, that is, that has been the history and practice.
Right, but is this phase or this part of the process, we don't have to request the use of these assigned?
So Ms. Page, I think I probably would need to defer to Mr. Myers to clarify that, at that, at that level.
Okay.
To clarify the question.
Right, the next step. And then the next question, the bus lease. Have we satisfied the payment for the bus lease, for payment?
The, the payments are still being made monthly, so we are still paying against the, the amortization schedule, and I think it's about eighty-nine thousand dollars a month. So we're still incurring those costs monthly.
I have been asked to, I, I was requested to, to request a payoff, if we were going to pay off, so we have received a payoff amount as of April sixth, which would be our next monthly payment, but I just, I was requested to get that information, but.
So the next question, there will be a savings if we paid it all.
Yes, we would no longer incur that, that eighty-nine thousand dollar monthly cost over the life, the remaining life of that particular need.
So we have, um, next steps for that part.
Right, our, our bus lease goes through twenty twenty-one, so it goes through November twenty twenty-one. So that's how long we have to go if, if we continue making monthly payments.
Do you save the interest or principal?
It, it applies to about eighty-nine, it's eighty-nine thousand dollars a month, but then it, it, we have a crossover and it goes down to eighty-two thousand dollars, and I think maybe because of some capitalized interest we paid at the beginning, but.
Since you're going to a second, if we were to pay it all, as of, or by April sixth, we would realize savings.
We would mitigate, we would avoid those recurring costs.
Thank you for this information. I hope the board, we have a better understanding of the fund balance, what is to assign, unassigned, committed, so we can, thank you. Thank you. For, next question.
Thank you.
Next slide, Ms. Starfield, you're going to discuss revisions to part two of the community relations section, some policy.
Thank you. Board members, before you unite, it's part two of the community relations section. Basically, we're in our policy revision mode, and you will have, you should see a side-by-side presentation on your, or side-by-side package on your onboard docs that's been posted, just to highlight some of the changes that are proposed at this particular time. This particular section did not have a whole lot of changes at this, at this time, but they're not terribly substantive in the sense that, you know, we, I would think we'd need to have a, a larger conversation about that, but I would ask that you review them and give me your feedback regarding the community relations section by April the ninth. And what we can do is, because you, what we called in our last board meeting, we did have some discussion regarding the sponsorship policy, and so I received feedback from one board member about that so far. So if you want to include your input in that, please give me that by the ninth. If you can incorporate it all, you also received previously the first half of the community relations section that at this point in time, review it all if you need it again, I can, I will supply that to you via email, and give me your comments on all of it by the ninth, so that we can be prepared for your first reading on your first meeting in April to the, I was trying to get you to break, but never mind. Hold on for just a second. So actually, if you can give me your feedback by, I was trying to get you to break, but if you can give me your feedback by March thirty-first to all of it, that would be helpful so that we can prepare for your first reading, and your, your first reading, which is your first meeting in April, followed by your second meeting, and those on your second meeting. And I will, I guess, forward it back to you in its entirety so that you have it in one place and can respond more to that. So are there any questions that I can use to tonight? March thirty, March thirty, March thirty-first, last, either way, you can just give, so that, March thirty-first, yeah, that's not, whatever day.
The next slide, Ms. Starfield, you're forward, discuss the overall cabinet structure and the overall cost of the cabinet fee in close, and your forecast of, oh, sorry, the separate administration.
So as previously stated, board members, because of the sensitivity of this discussion, because as it relates to personnel matters, we need to set some parameters around this discussion. And, give me back from, Ms. Levin. So for the org chart, no names, current, previous org chart, and the current org chart, no names. And salaries, no names, total, total salaries, current and previous total salaries. Because to protect, um, the integrity, you know, doing with personnel matters, and not discussing identifiable information. So, board, with board's question.
Thank you. So before you have the proposed organization chart, obviously, the quarter of the discussion over the new positions listed, I can walk through each of them and what the intent is, and then, as you can see, on the second page, there are the current budget rules and the new cabinet rules, and the delta in terms of the total costs, which we went to.
So I said, compared, before you onboarded that discussion, just want to cite the policy as it speaks to the org chart.
Um, we put it back into work, I didn't want it. Seven dash four point three, which was cited earlier, simply says that the division superintendent, excuse me, shall prepare an org, an organizational chart and distribute it to the school board and to members of the school division staff for purposes of communication. So that is the entirety of that particular policy. It does not include any provision for approval, as we discussed earlier, and basically it's just to guide the, the level of communication between staff members and, and school or to administrations.
Anything else, or should I proceed? Great. So starting at the left, the chief of staff role, you can see the four bullets there, and I want to emphasize that this is merely the high level of responsibilities, or certainly additional responsibilities, but this was just intended to give a flavor for the role. This is unchanged from the document that I have shared with each of you over the last several weeks, so I want to make sure, there is one edit I changed today for tonight's meeting. That doesn't mean that in the final analysis, we might decide to make some modifications, but this was the thinking behind these roles. So chief of staff, ensure that the board has the information that it needs to conduct its business, to be responsive to its requests, to manage all communications, drive the performance management process within the division, and ensure coherence and efficiency across the senior team, to make sure that the entire senior team is working as one united body. Second, chief schools officer, which would oversee the day-to-day management of schools, would manage four quote-unquote cluster superintendents, it's just a placeholder name, two elementary of about ten to twelve schools per cluster, one for the middle schools and one for the high schools, manage development of all school leaders, and oversee all school culture efforts, broadly speaking. Third role is the chief operating officer, which would manage all operations and budget functions, and manage all efforts to streamline district systems, technology, software, databases, et cetera, which has come up as a key issue in my short time here. Next, chief academic officer, would manage all academic efforts, curriculum assessment, intervention, professional development, English, language learners, exceptional education, alternative education, et cetera, and also drive a long-term strategy around personalized learning to make sure that we are ensuring that all of our students are receiving what they need to get success. Chief engagement officer, overseeing all community engagement, and school's efforts to increase our outreach to RPS families, as I have visited the schools and across the community, this is an area where I repeatedly hear we need to be doing even more, and I agree, and assist with outreach to and outsee with key city and state leaders to ensure that we are getting all the necessary funds and policies, et cetera, to be able to do our work. And last, chief talent officer, to manage all recruitment, onboarding, compensation, retention, work for all personnel, and to manage the development of essential office personnel. And as you can see, again, on the second page, the current cabinet roles totaling one point two million, and the new cabinet roles roughly one million, with the savings of approximately two hundred thousand.
Thank you for providing this overview. I appreciate that this was done in a quick turnaround. I do want to note that this board did not receive the, this documentation in written form, this is something we'll have to review in, in a one-on-one event. One, one question that I have regarding the cabinet roles that I listed under the nine cabinet roles, it's my understanding, or I guess my question is, were all of these positions also cabinet positions? Are these interim cabinet roles, or was this also the cabinet that was under the previous administration?
I can't speak to that. You want to speak to what I currently know as a cabinet?
Okay. And then my other question is regarding the budget under the chief schools officer, if we are adding the additional goals of the cluster superintendent, are those numbers, for those additional roles included in the one point oh six seven total for the new cabinet position?
No, it's not, because they're not cabinet positions, and there will be significant work done below the line across the organization, which will, of course, be fiscally prudent, and so, again, what I shared was what was cabinet, and so that's, those are the ones.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm regularly applying as it relates to opportunity, right-size downtown, and reduce footprint, so I'm pleased to have an opportunity to consolidate positions and, and do precisely that. I do have, if I'm being too candid, reservations pertinent to what Kenny has required about specifically the chief schools officer portfolio and, and perhaps, Mr. Superintendent, you could lay my concerns, that could be characterized as another, another layer of bill management. Perhaps you can speak to that and persuade me that my initial instinct is incorrect.
Sure. So research is clear that the span of control, that is, the number of individuals any one individual should manage, really should be no more than six or seven. And beyond that, it becomes very difficult for a manager to develop his or her employees. And so right now, we have a situation where we have two individuals, each of which manages over twenty principals. That is not best practice, either in schools or in the business sector. The idea here is to reduce the span of control, so that we're now at a, we'll be at a ratio of roughly, depending upon the level, one to eight to one to twelve. So that we're now at a rate, we'll be at a ratio of roughly, depending upon the level, one to eight to one to twelve, which is significantly better. Which will allow the principal managers to provide the support and the development that in every one of my conversations with our school leaders, they have indicated they would like to see more. That is in essence what those roles are. I am glad to commit that whatever reorganization happens below the line and, and there will be significant movement at all parts of the central office as we realign the strategic plan. Then there is no net increase in expenditure, absolutely not. So I'm glad to make that commitment public.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh. Uh, I think that's a really important point and, uh, at the risk of belaboring said point, uh, obviously we're operating in an environment of real scarcity of resources and, uh, uh, I want to ensure that we are providing that support to the principal, but, uh, that we always respect what I characterize as, uh, I characterize our principals as CEOs of the, of the respective buildings, I just want to make sure. Uh, so I appreciate your answers, I just want to ensure that we're not providing for any new middle management or layer of middle management.
Ms. Dor?
Thank you for this accounting. I have seen this org chart, so, um, I don't know if in, I feel like every board member has seen it, so I don't know if you missed it in the meeting or if you could just maybe clarify, um, because I definitely have seen this. But, um, my question is related to, my point is related to your commitment, um, to, uh, making consolidations below the line. Because I do think, um, there, it's important to, when we're thinking about these positions from a fiscal perspective, that we are saving money in central office, so. Um, I'm glad that the board took steps to consolidate twenty-one positions, um, in our last budget, if I think that was correct, or twenty-two. Um, but if you could just speak to as you're adding addition, as you're building out your staff, kind of your commitment to making sure that we are keeping central office lean.
Absolutely. Um, so on your first point, I met individually with every board member, shared the document. Um, made myself available in that meeting and subsequent phone calls to have any discussions about any concerns or questions, uh, about the organization chart. Um, and so I'm glad to do so again this evening. Uh, so for your second point, let me just reiterate again. Whatever reorganization happens, at most would be revenue neutral, but I will shoot to make it a cost savings for the entire organization. And so I have not yet had the opportunity to engage in looking at the entire central office. My hope was to bring on a senior team which can assist me with that process and then to thoughtfully reorganize to support that work and our strategic plan. But I am one hundred percent committed to getting as much money as we possibly can out of this building and into our schools.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, really was fond of the recommendation that I heard from the floor, uh, probably a couple hours ago. And, uh, though I would, uh, recommend it, not precisely what, uh, what was offered, uh, I would. I would love for this body to adopt a, uh, a, a policy that would provide for precisely, precisely that. In other words, that, uh, that any reorganization of, of downtown to include addition of new persons in the cabinet would have to provide for net, net savings year, year over year. Uh, I would, I would offer, uh, I would, with some consultation from our turn, I would offer that as a motion this evening.
I would not put your, sort of, question out as a policy, and I think that.
That also feels a far field from the discussion that we're having now. Again, I publicly in front of all the cameras made a commitment to make the reorganization revenue neutral and to make every effort to reduce savings, but I think it would be irresponsible of us to make commitments now without having done significant research before we pick a certain number and, and that sort of thing. I'm more than open to having that discussion, but I think that requires further preparation.
And also, Ms. Young, as we are reviewing, um, policies. So as, um, Ms. Levin just stated. We need to be prepared, we need to do our, do the adjust and be intentional in this discussion, discussion and at the appropriate time. So, and also I would like to say, as board leadership. Transparency, accountability. Is key and critical. And as your board chair. I always ensure. Information being disseminated is done so to each board member. Because collectively as a board, we make the decisions. Individually, we have one vote, but as the board. The board drives the discussion, the board makes the decision for the student issue. So I just want everyone to, um, to know, you can always make sure that the in- information or just being prepared as policymakers. Having the oversight. That we have been charged to do as the elected officials. And if you feel like it's not being done, then that's another conversation, but again. We, we all have to go forth, um, to work and do our due diligence as board members.
Uh, just real briefly, I concur with everything you just said, and to that end, uh, everybody around us far knows up to get a two point three million dollars in cuts to downtown, perhaps you can, uh, you can begin there, Mr. Hammonds?
So you want to talk, you saying within the parameters of this discussion?
Uh, we're skirting it, we're skirting it.
So, Ms. Young, I would hope that you would, um, have that conversation at the appropriate time.
I'll look, I'll look forward to, uh, bending, uh, bending everyone's ears more on that subject.
Thank you.
Ms. Gibson? Just, just a few points, um, I just, I, I mentioned this earlier, but, um, but I do think that, you know, as far as transparency goes, I want to make sure that, um, we're sensitive to the information that is shared in one-on-one meetings, um, since those are not public meetings and so, um, it did give me some pause to review an org chart in a one-on-one meeting and then not have the opportunity to be able to, to have that documented. But, uh, what, what I also want to note as it pertains to making a decision, um, I do appreciate that it's going to take time to look at overall, you know, the central office needs. And, uh, but we did spend a lot of time looking at our budget and deciding where we were going to make the cuts and there were not any administrative positions that was, that were included in that conversation. Um, and I just wonder if it is prudent to be moving forward with, uh, with these, uh, with, with this plan, um, and salary request without having done the due diligence of that review. Um, and then the, the third point, uh, is more specific. Um, in, in light of all the conversations that we have about special education, um, and certainly today's meeting, it was not an exception there. Um, I, I do question combining, uh, responsibilities that pertains to special education. Um, I, I, I do appreciate that, that the folks that, um, that have been identified are, are going to go above and beyond, but um, the amount of work I believe likely exceeds the capabilities of one person given, um, the amount of needs that we have in the district.
Was, I'm sorry, in the discussion, was there a question, I just wanted to try and be responsive?
No, I would continue. All right, and for me, I think it's just a comment as well. Um, thank you for this and I, I will just say on the, I appreciate your commitment for a revenue mutual. At least a revenue mutual, um, uh, changes or reward for central office. And I just want to reiterate again that RPS has long had a reputation and sometimes warranted and sometimes not, of being too top-heavy. And, and had a reputation of having such disparities between central office and our folks who are in the classroom doing the work day in and day out. Uh, and so we have to be extremely sensitive to that as we have these conversations. And I will tell you very frankly, when I first saw this, um, I just thought it was really going to be some musical chairs between A-level and B-level. And, um, so again, I'm happy to hear you say that revenue mutual at minimum. Um, and, you know, and speaking to Ms. Gibson's point, I would just say this, this organizational chart, I mean, it, it is. This has been something that's been done before, it has been truncated cabinet before. Um, and then you had different responsibilities under that. I'm extremely concerned about this. And the org clusters and all, I, I just cannot, I'm just extremely concerned about that. So, um, I look forward to continuing dialogue as we go through this. Um, because we want to make sure that of course, we're meeting the needs of our schools. But also, as my fellow peers, Ms. Gibson and all the staff, that just, our value is making sure that we are appropriating funds that, that we are of our values.
Just one last statement, just, just to comment on something Ms. Carson stated. Um. I have in a part of criticism as far as, um, central office being top-heavy. And as Ms. Carson just said, some of it was warranted, some of it wasn't. And, and when that analysis was done. It showed RPS was below the state average. Um, as it related to the central office, so, um. You know, I just, you know, I want to make that point because this has always been a discussion. And, and as I just stated, analysis was done. So, you know, you trust, but you verify. And so thank you for this information. Ms. Valo?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hammonds, for sharing this information with us. Uh, I think it is, it has been helpful to have some public dialogue about, uh, vision for, um, for the administration and how the cabinet positions will work out, so, um, I'm glad that we had the opportunity to do so. Um, I am a little wary about, and I'm not, I'm not a guy who's going to come up here and say, let's just dump a bunch of money into the administration, my imagination imagination, but I am a little worried about, um, about whether we will have constraints in the future if we decide that we need some specialized, uh, specialized administrators. Um, and I certainly don't want our hands to be tied in such a way that, that in the future we, we realize we need a little bit more oversight here or there. Uh, you know, if we need an extra position here or there to help us improve as a district, that, that we have the ability to do that, so. I, I do appreciate the, um, you know, our, our responsibility, our fiscal responsibility in the district, I think. Our first responsibilities for the development of the kids, I'm all about maximizing as many dollars as I can put in the classroom. Uh, to the extent that we have, we can bring in the educators to help, um, provide more tools for those teachers, uh, then, um, I'm certainly willing to have that conversation in the future. But I do think that, uh, that was powerful for you to make the representation you did today, so good for that.
Next title, now for, the next slide was, I think, six of the regional business, six point zero two, this is the two thousand eighteen summer school schedule.
Good evening, Madam Page. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, please look at the cameras. I'm pleased to bring to you this evening the schedule for summer school. Uh, if you, I, I put a page out on your seats as, as I walk, as, um, as you walk through this evening. The two thousand eighteen summer school schedule is as follows. Uh, summer school will commence on June twenty-fifth and, uh, and end on July twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. Uh, the, the summer school graduation will be down on July twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. I offered to you on this, this one page here, a, um, a breakdown of elementary, middle and high school schedules and, uh, the summer school locations as well as the schedule that will feed into the summer school locations. And so you can see that the elementary school day will be about a five-hour day. Um, middle school will be about a five-hour day and in high school it needs to be longer because we will have both credit recovery as well as, uh, initial credit courses, uh, during high school. And, uh, if you, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I have a, um, a program ready for you for your.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, quick question for you about the locations, are these the same locations that we had for last year?
So some of them are in the same locations as last year, we, uh, last year we had both, um, uh, uh, state-funded summer school as well as federal-funded summer school and locations, so we had a, a larger number of schools last year. And that was because they were priority school status and so that funding is going away, so we, we, last, so there will be some, so. Uh, we're paying attention to that and we'll, you know, we'll rotate those schools out for the next year, but, uh, we ran these paths, Mr. Hammonds and Mr. Kim. And so they were, we.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one more question?
Thank you. Uh, so the other one is just, is related to communicating with the community about, about these schools. Uh, the last thing I want is a, uh, is a windfall for towing companies when classes go into, uh, into session this summer, so to the extent that we can make sure we get some signs out so that folks are notified. Uh, because there, there have been issues in the past with, uh, heavy towing, at least outside of Denver, so.
Well fortunately, our students don't drive, they're not.
Fair enough, but, uh, community members are not allowed to park during, uh, during the school day, they park during the evenings or during weekends. Such to the extent that they believe it's not during normal school hours, I think that would have some issues.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening and again, school board members, superintendent, cabinet commissioners. Um, tonight I'm here before you again to present to you an opportunity to apply for the early head start, head start grant. This year it's a competitive grant for five years to provide early head start and head start services. So the grant is proposing that we do both early head start and head start and provide high, high-quality comprehensive early childhood services to adverse children and families. We'd like to provide that in the area of Richmond City, Petersburg, Gluton and Powhatan County. This comprehensive approach we're doing is designed to reinforce and respond to uni- to the unique strength and needs of each eligible child and family. And also to provide health, nutritional, educational services and other resources. One of the most unique things about our program is that we should, we provide services to the entire family. Our goal is to provide early childhood educational services to our children, to give them a chance to succeed and to provide resources and supports to family, so we can move them from poverty to financial resiliency. As most of you are aware, Richmond and Petersburg poverty rates were more than twice that of the states. And in order for us to move our families out of poverty. We need to assist our families in owning a living wage. Currently, we are serving nine hundred and thirty-six families combined between all programs. And seven hundred and thirty-one of our families need less than fifty. and 731 of our families make less than $15,000 a year. For a family of three, which is one adult, and two children, it costs an average of $19,000 a year for just food and housing. This does not include the cost of childcare, medical, and transportation. So it is a must that we provide our families with furthering their education and obtaining empowerment where they can earn a living wage. In Richmond, Petersburg, Gutcheon, and Powhatan, 21% of those children were born to parents with less than a 12-grade education. And looking at the 2016 fall pre-K PAF scores, 17% of the students were below the kindergarten readiness level. So we are doing our due diligence to review our pre-K PAF scores and other data so that we can individualize training needs, so that we can inform our parents, provide more services where parents can further their education. We all know a healthy parent is able to give more to their children. Therefore, we are proposing to serve 867 Head Start children and 56 Early Head Start children. We are requesting the full $7,508,838 to provide these services, and the district will provide $1,501,767 as a non-federal in-kind match. And that is done through voluntary services. We get those from parents through home visits, participate in parent-teacher conferences. We also get those in-kind dollars from our childcare partners who provide certain services that's not reimbursed through Head Start funds. So I'm hoping that we can be able to apply for this grant that is due on April the 9th, 2018. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to, in other words, our current grant is expired. So this is, if we have to enter the competition to get this for the next five years. Hopefully, we will, they work so hard on this grant proposal, and I can't imagine that the federal government would not approve. But we won't have Head Start if we don't get this grant.
And Ms. Owen, they sit on our budget committee to help with the planning of the budget.
I just also want to echo Ms. Owen's comments to say thank you for the Herculean task it is to put together this request, so on behalf of the entire administration, I just want to say thank you. And if Washington gives us any trouble, I'll go up there and fight them right now.
I move that we approve this application. Oh, what is it?
I'll move it later.
Thank you.
All right, good evening again, board members. Just to reiterate the communication that you all received on the 13th of this month, or last week, there was a, the email was circulated regarding the bullying policy. Just to remind board members regarding the parameters, or the requirements, rather, of the school board's bullying policy. And last year, bullying policy is dated in 8-23. And so last year, just, the General Assembly passed a law which was signed into action that required a school administrator, upon receiving a bullying investigation, to apprise the appearance of the students involved, of the status of that investigation within five days. And so that language was added last year. I will say that the administration has reminded in the recent weeks principals of schools of the requirements of that notification, and they have also received a template to use for that notification so that they can, so that they can comply with the law and the factors. And so if there are any questions about that, certainly, you can ask. And I think that the inquiry was brought out of, there were some concerns at the school level perhaps. But that information has been shared by the administration with the schools and as I indicated in the email. If you have any concerns or reports of school administrators not adhering to that information, please pass that information to the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly, for the update. And I would just say that, I mean, my concern is, yes, the policy, but also procedures and interpretation of bullying. All too often, I don't think there's a day that goes by that you don't receive any one of us will see a complaint from a parent, let's say, you know, my child is being bullied. I have expressed it to the school administration. I've gone there, you know, the stories vary, but we hit them where they said they expressed it or shared their information with schools. And I guess for me, I just want more clarity on the procedure, or for us to review the procedure. And all too often, then we hear, well, it's not bullying, it's conflict. But for a parent, the parent doesn't understand the conflict. It's my, if my child is being bullied, my child is not the initiator of conflict. And so it's something that you really, really have to look at and review, to me, as expeditiously as possible because then for school board members on the opposite end, then we are sitting in a disciplinary hearing, and we're hearing a child who has been bullied and bullied and bullied, and then it's a break. And so, so we have to really review, again, the school environment culture, but also specifically review what we're doing in terms of these procedures and how we're addressing it. I don't understand how, if I am the victim of bullying, I sign the same behavior contract as the person who was bullying me. I just don't, I think we just need to really look at these procedures. And some of that will be addressed with conflict resolution and restorative justice, yes, but we, we really have to get a handle on this, especially with what we're saying, you know, not only in our own school district, but what we're facing nationally too. So this is really important.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just real briefly, because I think my colleague said that really, really well, but as recently as today, and Fleece is right, every day, at least almost every day, I receive a call or email pertinent to this issue. And because there aren't so infrequently any consequences for this bullying behavior, it does escalate. And instead, we could nip this in the bud, but candidly, guys, seems to be a lot of tolerance for this. And we can protest the contrary, but I'm sorry, there, in my assessment, there's a lot of, there's a lot of tolerance for this, and I think it's most unfortunate, and it does realize, and more grave reactions. And I'm really glad that we're having a conversation about it, as much as.
I had a question just as it pertains to, this evening, we had a gentleman who was on staff, who was speaking of bullying, and I was wondering how the policy applies to staff. I've heard other staff members similar complaints.
There actually is a separate workplace bullying policy. It is at 7-3.20. And that particular policy includes a complaint procedure on if anyone, regarding, you know, any staff member has a definition of what workplace bullying is. And I believe, and I'll check in a minute about your student bullying policy, but talks about that, you know, what it is, how to report it, who's supposed to investigate it, what that looks like. So there is a very detailed workplace bullying policy that is available and as a recourse for staff members. And then the, you know, I won't speak to the comments about the procedures and certainly, you know, you know, we will assist or lead it with those, but, okay, so no, there's no, no doubt.
So all my colleagues will recall that last year, when we adopted SCORE, we significantly increased the, significantly increased the penalties or consequences for bullying in a really marked way. I, something for our superintendent staff, I would love to see some aggregate data on if that, if that's being tracked and if that's real, if that's realized in any of our determined efforts to mitigate this problem. So I just, I don't want to speak for the group, but I would love to see some data on it.
The next item is a set of board action items, set number 1,01, to see some action, a recommendation regarding Patrick Henry's group, science, and arts.
The recommendation is to renew the charter.
I just want to have a clarifying comment to make sure that all board members are aware of what the action is about tonight, and it's simply about whether or not you're going to renew the charter. I know that you all received at the initial stage of Patrick Henry submitting their information to renew a charter agreement that had some revisions, some proposed revisions to that charter agreement. But that is not what you're moving on tonight. At this point, it's whether or not to renew. And then, once you decide to renew, we can look at the charter agreement to determine what provisions, if any, we're going to agree to or not, and there may be some things, extra things that you want to add. There were some provisions that were added by the, that were recommended by the committee for consideration. So I just want to make it clear that that process will still need to be completed and that renegotiated contract will become, well, charter agreement will come back before you for the new charter.
So, Ms. Lilly, so at the last board meeting, you see the recommendation for renewal from the administration, right, which was repeated, right?
Yeah.
I agree, I agree with you a third time.
But I just wanted to make sure that everybody was very clear on what they're moving on, and to the extent that, and I don't have a recommendation in front of me, but I think the recommendation was for an additional five years, is that correct? Okay, so that, that will answer the question, that's the term, and you cannot move beyond five years.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nine months on the campaign trail in 2016, I regularly share with anyone listening how much I love Patrick Henry, and why I love Patrick Henry, but if you'd indulge me just for a minute, love to share with my colleagues, and specifically regards something called Field Trip Fridays. It specifically regards something that we heard earlier, and that's, you've been caught. You've been caught doing something extraordinary in the school. It regards a 12-month school year. It regards that over 90% of the parents and or guardians participate in programming at the school, and it regards that Patrick Henry does more with less. And I repeat that, Patrick Henry does more with less. It's an exemplary school in every way, and it'd be my pleasure to make the motion to encourage us to renew the five-year authorization for Patrick Henry.
Second.
Is the move by Ms. Young and second by Ms. Owen to approve the recommendation regarding Patrick Henry School of the Science and Arts for the renewal for five years? Any discussion? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. So I just want to note, I really appreciated hearing all the comments and thoughts as they were talking about Patrick Henry. I'm fresh off of my campaign, and anyone that's followed my campaign would know that I believe very strongly that, as we're, our country's been looking at education reform, that I don't believe that the privatization model and that charter schools are part of the path forward. And, you know, my concerns in that are that it removes funding from traditional public schools, and further that, you know, I'm proud of the fact that I'm part of a democratically-elected school board, and through that process, folks are able to come and participate in the process of governing our schools, and charter schools fragments that process, and that's a concern. What I appreciate about Patrick Henry is that the school's success is very much about the engagement of the community. And I don't believe that it's affected as a charter that has created that success, but rather the community participation. And as folks were talking about the school, it reminded me very much of the traditional public school, that elementary school that my kids did and do attend. You know, on the first day that I was sworn in on the board, I voted in support of a facilities plan that would keep schools open, and likewise, I have very little interest in closing a school, particularly one that has support. So I wanted to let the community know that I will, you know, I support the renewal of the contract. I would not support, you know, growing the landscape of charters here in the city. I would be very, you know, opposed to that, but I see no reason to change course.
Other questions? Tell us something.
Thank you, Madam Page. I too support the renewal of the Patrick Henry contract. What I do want to say is that I just love the community engagement, and also it helps us to look at the curriculum and what curriculums could look like on a school-by-school basis, even in our comprehensive public school settings. But also, I appreciate the partnership, and it gets lost because I believe the community members have worked tremendously hard, their own vision, and just were so committed to seeing it to its fruition, and we're seeing, after some hiccups, we are seeing the results of that commitment. But we're also seeing the result of a partnership between Patrick Henry and Richmond Public Schools. And we're seeing a partnership whereas, I know there have been, you know, when we had laws and we had some hiccups, you know, we've had some really stellar Richmond Public School people help and come into the school and work diligently on the curriculum, people like Beverly Brast and Cynthia Gentry, who really, you know, just rolled up their sleeves and fell in love with the school. So I do want to just thank the community, and also it was wonderful, and the commitment of RPS, and RPS also not being afraid to say, hey, you know, to make this a better school, this is what is recommended, because it takes that type of partnership.
Can I just add another comment about Patrick Henry School of the Science and Arts? I'm looking at their call list in the audience, and I was there in, you know, some of the initial stages, and it was bumpy. It was very, very bumpy. But because of the hard work, the partnership from RPS, Patrick Henry, and they're still our children. They're still Richmond Public Schools, they're still our children, and we are RPS too. Yes, and the success of our children is very important. And we're thoroughly seeing the labor of our folks. the labor of our folks, and so, the ready. Ms. Doran?
Well, while you brought up Ms. Corliss, I just wanted to also say, I don't think I have any constituent that is as passionate about the work that she's done for Patrick Henry. She's been described as the grandmother of the school, and I think if we all had grandmothers or grandfathers of our schools, they would be successful, so thank you for your activism.
Other questions?
I don't know how much substance I have to add here, but I agree with almost everything that my colleagues have said so far, and I think what we're seeing at Patrick Henry, and it's been very evident, as folks have come from the community to speak to us and to voice their concerns, and offer tours, and send emails, and Facebook messages, and calls, and text messages to talk about it, is that there's just a lot of passion for the school. And I think that's something that we talk about with a lot of our schools. I often refer to needing more community capital or parental capital in our schools to see them succeed, and it seems that Patrick Henry has that space at this point, and that's very encouraging, so to the extent that we can learn things from what we're seeing at Patrick Henry, I think that's very important to do. I'm also generally someone who's a little more...who's going to take a more discerning approach to charter schools, and I think that the role of the traditional public school is very important, but I do think there's that room for innovation. So I'm happy with the progress that we've seen in Patrick Henry, but I'll be a little bit cynical about the potential schools that charter schools pop in now. But at this point, it's just great to see so much encouragement.
Other questions?
It was presented last time, so if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yes.
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 Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sipin?
Yes.
And Ms. Ready? Yes. The next item is seven point three received for action regarding the school.
So can I move this? All right, I move.
The motion?
I move that we approve the 2018-2019 school calendar as presented.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Dr. Sipin to approve the school calendar as presented. Any discussions? Ms. Bur.
All right, I just have one question, and maybe this is added later. I had a couple of parents to ask about this from the last parent conference, that for some schools it was held from the hours of two to five, and then they'll work until five. So I notice, one day I'm trying to find a parent at the conference, they don't hear. I see March the 29th, but do we decide hours later? And the reason I'm asking, would that be a decision to suit the technical plan to us later, or...because they're not in the hours placed on this. My concern is that, I know at one time it was on the calendar from a certain time until 6:30 or a certain time until 7:00. My concern is also number one, making sure parents have an opportunity to attend conferences. So I don't know whether this is your part, or whether that can be added later. What's the decision on that?
We haven't set that time for the moment, because once again, we wanted to, you know, provide superintendent, but it's already either a two or three hour, but that's the pleasure of doing it.
So something we would add later to?
Yes, I'm glad to come back and come out on proposed times.
Excellent, thank you.
Other questions?
It was moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Dr. Sipin to approve 2018-2019 school calendar as presented by Ms. Owen.
Yes.
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 Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Bur?
Yes.
Ms. Sipin?
Yes.
The next item is seven point zero four received for action, a school safety resolution that was ready for that four year, and we will examine the review.
I'm trying to change this one, it's not in front of me, but they were... I want to get my check changed, so I can tell you what was deleted. And again, these were from board recommendations. I can just tell you that there was a change from Ms. Owen to their fourth paragraph. There, if you will recall, there was several locations listed there, and there was a suggestion to limit it to the Barrow County, Florida incident, and then the others would be included in that paragraph. Mr. Young on the eighth whereas clause that talks about whereas assault weapons have no place in society, and other types of guns are too easily obtained, that was what it stated before, but he wanted to add illegally obtained, and then you see that it's just added by illegal means. There was a paragraph that was deleted that related to asking the President of the United States to take some actions with government agencies. Ms. Owen asked for that to be deleted. Yes, the now be it further resolved, this was a paragraph that, of course, you don't see in this final version, but the paragraph that was deleted, that it said now be it further resolved, that the school board and RPS call on the President of the United States to charge all agencies of the federal government with the task of reducing the number of felony injuries and deaths in America. And finally, Mr. Young's second revision was to delete gun ownership out of the whereas clause that says whereas the nation's data collection of gun violence and gun ownership, that was the previous language, gun ownership was deleted. The last section that was affected was the very last paragraph, and you will recall that Mr. Barlow had some concerns with the broad language that was listed there, because it originally said whatever data was necessary to track and monitor, and that has changed to collect data reasonably necessary to track and monitor. So that goes to the extent of the revisions, and they add that the intent of the resolution has not really been what I thought substantive with, oh, those revisions. Sorry about that, I did not have enough time. Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Dr. Cosley to approve the school safety resolution as amended.
Discussion?
Yeah, any discussion? Ms. Doran?
I just want to...it's not worth wordsmithing all night, but I do want to say for the record, I do think it is incumbent on our president to instruct all of his agencies that to create meaningful gun reform legislation now, and I think that's extremely important. I understand why Ms. Owen removed it, but because it was broad in scope, I'm assuming. But I just want to make sure that we're not...the reason why you removed it was not because you don't think that...I personally believe it is incredibly urgent for the federal government to take action.
It's like I tell kids when they're doing test questions, really, any time it's every or all, you know? We don't need the Department of Agriculture working on this. We really don't. Every agency is a whole lot of agencies, and what I had mentioned was that there are some agencies right now that are forbidden from doing research, like CDC, that...that's a whole thing, you know? Yes, appropriate agencies, but not every. Every time it's every, I tell the kids, it's probably...
I also hate to be the wordsmith tonight, but perhaps we can say appropriate agencies rather than every agency, and keep some of that, because as you mentioned, the CDC, there are various agencies. I wouldn't doubt that there's some gun tie-in that, you know, the Department of Agriculture built closely enough. So I would encourage us to limit the scope of it, if that's helpful. I also think that this is a particular, particularly pertinent discussion today after what we saw in our community today, and I just wanted to commend our superintendent administration for how they communicate with the public and how they handle the situation, because from what I saw, it seemed like there was a lot of communication going on there, and it's a very challenging situation to walk into. So my hope is that we'll also continue to drive discussions moving forward about what we can do to better secure our personal buildings, whether that be locks on doors in the classrooms or security cameras. Yes, I think as we've heard before, we need to balance these efforts with the privacy rights of our students and the expectations of privacy of our students. So I just hope that we'll continue this conversation past this resolution.
Ms. Young?
Well, I'll let the resolution speak for itself, but I just wanted to say for the record that I think the idea of teachers packing heat is arguably the worst idea I've heard in my four decades or less of systems on this planet.
Other questions? Ms. Gibson?
I just wanted to note that I agree with my colleagues. The language that is a change that I feel somewhat uneasy about is the addition of obtained by people, illegal means. Much of the violence that happened as far as in the children's world, which is what sparked this, is through guns that were not obtained by illegal means. That said, I'm interested in a wordsmithing piece, but I'd look at my preference to keep that religious.
Other questions?
It was moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Dr. Sipin to approve the school safety resolution as amended by Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Bur?
Yes.
The next item is seven point zero six received for action, human resources actions.
Good evening. I'm Chair Page, Dr. Sipin vice chair, superintendent chambers members of the school board. I bring before you both the Human Resource Agenda as well as a dendum that were left in your chair. Recommended actions for tonight's meeting are the following: the nomination of nine employees, change of contract for 12 employees, the resignation of six employees, termination of one employee, return fully four employees, a furlough of four employees, retirement of one, and the reappointment of two employees.
Are there any questions?
Okay.
Seven point zero seven received for action, business section of policy man.
Is that moved? So... So it's been moved by Ms. Moore and seconded by Ms. Owen to receive, to approve, or to approve the business section of the policy man. Any discussion?
Ms. Owen? Yes.
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 Yes, Ms. Bur?
Yes.
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 And Ms. Pay?
Yes.
Motion passed, nine zero.
All right.
Motion passed, nine zero. Seven point oh eight received for action, new head start plan.
I move that we immediately and forthwith proceed this grant application.
A second.
So it's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Mr. Barlow to receive, I'm sorry, to approve the head start grant application. Any discussion? Other questions?
Ms. Owen? Yes. Ms. Gibson? Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Bur?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Yes.
Dr. Sipin?
Yes.
Ms. Pay?
Yes.
The next item is seven point zero nine, received for action, the superintendent's recommendation for designated sign with his absence.
Um...
You did it, but maybe Ms. O'Leary will help you explain why those are the... I'm sure I'm the best person, but so it's fine extending that you did, and it was Mr. Myers, and that's fine, but at all times, Mr. Myers is not here, and there are some grants that run through MAGA that need to be processed and done in a timely fashion, so that would be my role if approved, so that they keep on the process through VDOE. You have to approve them throughout the...for them to then go to VDOE for final approval.
So the recommendations are to Mr. Myers, but also add this openly designated sign with Mr. Thomas's absence.
Is that moved?
This has been ruled by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Dr. Sipin to add this authority on openly as the... As we mean, sign. Yeah, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Casper? Ms. Bur, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Page? The motion passes 900. The next item is other essential items, I do not have it this time. The next item is the business.
I think we want to make mention of the launch on Saturday starting at 10:00 from Enel King Middle School, walking from Enel King Middle School to the Capitol. And the rally to support the movement, the rally, gun battles. From the night everyone, this February 24th, starting from Enel King Middle School at 10:00. Oh, you want some of this book?
Yes, this, we moved early, you want? Maybe, I've been early by the showcase that, you know, high school and also the community, the social society, the history fair took place there. And our students, our products were excellent. I wasn't able to stay because of another meeting to see who won first, second, third. Four, fifth, sixth. I hope the youth school was listed, I don't know. But the products were well presented, we had a good turnout of parents and children. We speak of that, I have been excellence, that was well put together, well done, well represented and we have a very good turnout. So, many thanks to Department of Instruction for showcasing, showcasing our children. So, that's a lot for teachers to put together with their students. And I'm very impressed because Enel King had an excellent display on our box. And for those young ladies to share that and the manner in which they did it. And I asked, why did you choose that? And one of them said, because it was documented. I thought that it was documented, the history was there. So, that was something to think about. So, thank you so very much, appreciate it, love that.
Dr. Sapien?
This is your final official reminder that this Saturday, we'll be having the Metro Richmond Step Fair, Hannover High School at 1:00. Come support our students, 1:00 to 3:30, students. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, subsection A, subsection 1, of Good Virginia 1950s Amendment, made the school board decision to include Session 2, discuss prospective candidates for performance, the assignment promotion, permission, talent, discipline, orientation, and.
Second.